The Chapel Hill Town Council meetings are brought to you by a grant from Carolina Cable, the village companies, and the town of Chapel Hill.
This project was completed this summer. It consisted of paving, curbing gutter, drainage work, and it turned out a fair amount of rock removal. We have gone through the process that's required by statute, that being to notify all -- or to -- after the project was completed, we compiled all the costs, broke them down by petition, and each subunit by the unit prices that were bid, so that we feel that our compilations accurately show the costs for each petitioner and each property within each petition, based on the unit prices that were bid in the contract. These preliminary assessment rolls were compiled and placed in the mail to each property owner in accordance with the statute. They also have been on file with the town clerk, and I've been available in the engineering office. We've also advertised this public hearing in the Chapel Hill newspaper. The assessments, perhaps, do you want me to go through each assessment at this point and state the unit -- or the front-footage cost?
George, just go through it generally and explain why you have the difference between $10 and $35. I think that's the important part.
Basically, the petition, the cost per front foot is based on the amount of work that occurred within that petition area. Certain areas, such as Rigsby Road and Kingston Drive, were transition zones that transitioned out of curbing gutter into existing streets that were improved without curbing gutter. They also had very low drainage work. Those are probably the lowest two unit prices per front foot. Piney Mountain is a little bit higher, it has some curb on it, and the -- probably the highest one is Parton Street. That is reflective of the amount of both drainage work and rock removal primarily in that particular petition area. So depending on where your -- where a certain property fell, it could have a significantly different front foot cost because of the extra work that was involved within that petition area. Primarily, these extra costs were drainage and rock removal.
Thank you, George. Mr. Mayor, one other general point, the owners of the assessed property will have the option of paying the assessment in one payment within 30 days after the confirmation and publication of the assessment roll, or they may pay it over a period of 10 years at 6 percent interest. And with that, I think that completes our general comments, and we think it'd be appropriate now to move to each of these, with each being an individual hearing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Emory Road and Parton Drive, and manager -- manager gave his introduction. Now we'll have comments by citizens on Emily. Okay? Questions and comments by council members? Ms. Emily and Parton Drive we're talking about now.
See, Mr. Council, there on Emily, did she want to say? Yeah, did you want to say something? Mr. Council?
Hi.
Say, you were on Emily, and we had you on that section of the petition, I mean of the assessment.
Assessment.
Do you have comments?
No, I don't have any comment on that, only about Emily and Parton, the corner in the Parton, that intersection there, was that included in that assessment, or the town will take those from the intersection?
I might comment on that, too. I don't know if you can see this, this map here, the -- these areas at the intersection that actually have no front footage on private property were paid entirely by the town. It's this area, this, this, and this area, and this area, the kind of crosshairs, so that was paid without any assessment to the properties.
All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. Pardon, introduction by the manager, it's already been given, so we'll go through comments by citizen. Now, let's, Mr. Manager, let's just briefly make a statement here, so they'll know exactly which street we are talking about, if you have the engineer just say brief statements, so they...
This is for Pardon Street, and George, if you pointed out that's shown as yellow on his colored map, and this one ran about $33 a foot.
Okay. Mr. Council?
The inner pardon, my property on the inner pardon, where I gave the, I think it was about 20, 20 feet, to feel that flow across where the water drains, the big pipe that runs under the... After you finished, I was just wondering, did you go over the 20 feet? It seems to me that some over the 20 feet that you, like I was struck a lot on my guide, and other than where he told me normally it would come from the 20 feet from where the road was, from where it is, but when they finished it and completed it, it seems to me it's just about 30 feet.
We had all the easement state and the best of our knowledge.
I've seen that 15 feet, you had your...
Yes, ma'am. I've seen it since it was completed, I don't specifically remember where the edge of road was at the time.
What was happening here, Mr. Council, is that area, as he did go over about six feet, but we had some erosion, because the amount of water traveling through that pipe, it was getting into your yard, so actually to save that area, we had to do a little more grading and extended the rip wrap, so that we wouldn't have erosion past that 20 feet, so that it was going down the line. And also, at 45 feet, there was a requirement from Park County Road Control to put another silt fence up, and we had that addressed.
Is there a question?
Thank you, Phil, and on Parton Street, I wonder why there's so many drains on that one street? There are double drains there.
It was based on the hydrology, the area was analyzed for stormwater runoff, and it was determined that that number of drains and catch basins was...
Both of those catch, more or just one?
The double catch basins?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, they both do, and it certainly, then, a storm needs that much area to allow the water to get in, so it doesn't flood the street during a severe storm.
Is that in the lower, is that the lower part of that street?
Yes, we have several double catch basins that were required in this, according to the drainage analysis, not only on Parton Street, but some others in the dips.
But are they the same class of Parton and Emily, took them on the corner, were they the same class of Parton and Emily? I can't seem to look for that.
They probably weren't identical.
Emily and Parton?
Emily and Parton were combined...
25.
25.
25, and Parton is 33 and a half.
So it's not the same?
No.
It's not the same.
Did you put much drainage up on this end of Parton, did you mean coming out there?
We only put the drainage in where it was necessary. That's why there are discrepancies and there are differences in the assessments. We have to put the drainage in where the water's gonna go in the street, so some areas had more than others.
Okay. Question by council members now, on Pardon Street. Move referral.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. Martha Lane, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Martha Lane is the one showing up there in green on the map, and it has a cost of approximately $23.48 per foot.
Okay. Questions and comments from citizens? Okay, council members?
Mr. Smith, down at the end of Martha Lane, Martha and Rigsby. Did you say the town paid for all of that?
The town paid, the town paid for the transitions into the existing paving here. This road was paved to a certain point here, and it, when this was originally paved, it was supposed to have been paved, and it all left the property corner, and if it wasn't, for what reason, I don't know. And this paving over here, because of the grade coming down on this unopened road here, we needed to pave out to a certain point to preserve the paving, and this is the normal intersection.
I guess my question was, who does that paving, does it touch the Lee's property?
He, Mr. Lee is being assessed for this, his frontage that's shown right in this box here. Yes, he's being assessed for the property, the frontage's directly down half of the street, directly off of Martha Lane. He's being assessed under the Rigsby Road petition.
Well, it was just my understanding that it was paved, the pavement, the other pavement came to the end of his property line, and that was not, from that, from where the pavement start to... Now, I'm just asking the question, call me, ask of me.
Well, we paid over to tie into the existing paving on Rigsby Road.
I say, the existing paving, from what I can understand, is at the end of the Lee's property line. In other words, that property line, paving is covered, all of that property is covered by existing paving, and the paving for this was not on his property, was not touching his property. I don't know, I'm just asking.
No, that wasn't the case. He had, his property line is over here, and you can see his frontage runs, his property line is to the other side of Martha Lane, so we did not assess him for the tie-in, where we had some ravelled pavement at the end of the existing paving that we took out to match in, but we did assess him for the area that was direct frontage on his property.
Other questions, comments by council members? I hear referral. All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. Marcus Road, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, the next one is Marcus Road, and it's shown on the map in the blue color, and it had a cost of $23.48 a foot.
Comments from citizens? More questions, statements? Heard none? Council members?
Mr. Penigraff, where he has...
Mr. Penigraff?
They're the only ones from Marcus Road that are here.
I don't have the person, the person that I had before has been answered, because I were concerned at first, that we knew we didn't get any drainage near on the property, and so we answered it by the cost, because where there was, pipe put in, of course, the floor, and we knew it should have been, so we're satisfied.
Thank you. Okay, let's get out of here. I hear a referral. All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. Part of Kensington Drive.
Favo. Nuevo. Well, how did you do?
High end, and it's pretty much just a strip paving, as I recall, and the cost on that ran just a little over $10 per foot.
Comments from citizens on this? Mr. Smith, you see, and those people from that street up there? Okay? Heard none? Okay, all, Mr. Smith, I have a question.
How much of this, I guess my concern is, is particularly this area, should have been paved, I believe, when that subdivision was put in there. And my question is, how much of this should have been paved, that was not paved at the time that the subdivision was made, not, not this particular Pine Mountain Road, but the other one?
I really can't speak to that specifically, Mr. Smith. We did note that this had been paved fairly close to a property line here, which may not have been part of the timberline development that was over here, and this area up here had been paved just to a location, so I don't know, I really can't answer why, at the time those two were approved, we didn't get that paving.
Well, somewhere, somewhere, somehow, we ought to be able to determine, I think, who was responsible for that, based on the two subdivisions. Could we not go back in time, maybe, and decide? I just hate to have people to pay for things that other people should have paid for when they, when they put in the subdivision, when they built that street, when that street was built and completed out there. In my opinion, Kingston Drive, it's a continuation of Kensington Drive, and that part was left out, and I, you know, of Kingston Drive in the development of it. My question is, why?
Mr. Smith, we can probably go back and find on the subdivision flats where the property lines start, stopped, and started, and probably may be able to explain why it happened that way, but I don't think we'd, at this time, would be able to go back and get the developer to pay for it, because it has to now be charged to the owners who, of the budding property. But if you wish, we can go back and try to look, find those old maps and see.
I just hope we will not allow a situation like this to exist again, to the point where that, there's a gap in the paving, when one, in the extension of one street, see, that's an extension of Kingston Drive, and it should have been paved. I agree, we ought to be very careful that that doesn't happen again.
Move referral.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. All right, part of Pine Mountain Road?
Mr. Mayor, this is that part of Piney Mountain Road that connects around the corner there at the, at the house property, and connects with Emily Road and Piney Mountain. George, I don't know what color that is.
Brown.
Brown? It shows up there, it's kind of brown on the map. That had some curbing gutter and some strip paving, and it's about $26 a foot.
Okay. Comments from citizen? Comments by council members? Move referral. All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. Part of Rigsby Road?
Rigsby Road is shown, I guess, in a pencil mark, crossed hatch, on the flat, and it's about $11 and a half a foot, and it, too, is just completing out the intersection there and connecting up some pavement through the intersection.
Okay, comments from citizen? Okay, no comment from citizen? Comments from council members? I hear a referral? Second. All in favor, say aye. Ayes, likewise. Ayes, have it. That is the assessment roll, and I'm really glad to get that over, but I would like to make a statement here. John, I'm not running for mayor, but I just had to say that, since I'm sitting in this chair, is that this was a long time coming, and to get those roads fixed out there, and I think we went about it, Mr. Manager, in the right way, in a sense that we do have it, we have the road down paved now, rather than coming in and assessing before the fact, and sometimes people can't actually see it, but now that we have it down, I think that could cut down on some of the protests that we probably could have had. So thank you very much. I'll be out that way soon. Talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, may I just also add that basically now, in this assessment, you're only assessing for approximately half of the cost, and the town was picking up the other half, and also that the procedure now, from this point, is that since there were, we heard no objections tonight, we assume that these, that we have the calculations correct, and this will be back on your agenda on July 6th for ratification and confirmation of the assessment rolls.
Attention? Hill Carroll of North Carolina Amateur Sports is on the highway somewhere with the torch at this time, and he has his representative...
He has a representative.
Give your name, so for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro town, members of the council. I'm Kathy Rosenthal, representing North Carolina Amateur Sports this evening. Hill Carroll is very sorry he can't be here tonight, but he is in Wilmington, and our torch run is beginning its 2,800-mile jaunt, and of course, it will be in Chapel Hill on July 16th. I am here tonight to discuss a continuation of some discussions which our staff has had with members and officials of the town of Chapel Hill regarding some services to enhance our transportation system during the festival. It is in regard to two specific services, one being the continuation of the U route during the two weeks of the festival, and the other being some services for off-duty policemen to help in our transportation system with the university. And the, these services, we had been working with the members of the town of Chapel Hill, their staff, and we confirmed that these services would be available, and we are delighted, because this is gonna make a big difference for enhancing that traffic flow in Chapel Hill during the festival. And unfortunately, there was a miscommunication as far as the services, because we were under the assumption that these services were going to be provided to the festival, and it was in the letter that I received, that was dated June 9th, from the town manager, that we were informed that we would be billed for these services at the completion of the festival. And that is the reason that I'm here this evening, and why I wasn't here, asking about this at an earlier time. And basically, why I'm here tonight is to ask the council to waive the fees, which we have confirmed at $6,300 for the continuation of the U route during the festival, and $9,800, which is the cost of the off-duty policeman to help with our transportation system during the festival, and ask that the council amend the budget and to fund these services for the festival because of the unique nature of the festival. And I would also want to give any background and answer any questions as far as, we have made similar requests to other municipalities where there have been city services involved, and I am prepared to outline some of those services, which the city of Raleigh, for instance, will be giving. They have allocated $6,000 for police help for the cycling competition, which will be in downtown Raleigh. $5,000 they've allocated for the use of the civic center and the ancillary costs that will be involved there. They've also allocated $35,000 for improvements to Lyons Park, and also, they have given us complimentary use of all the city facilities. In Wake County, they have allocated $26,000 for the use of student activity buses for use of emergency road service, for buses which, not only Wake County's buses, but buses which will be coming from other school administrative units. And then also, a $15,000 matching grant for other improvements which will be made at Lake Wheeler for our canoe kayaking and yachting competitions. In Greensboro, the city of Greensboro has allocated $35,000 for improvements to the Greensboro Coliseum, and basically, what I am asking for, and would ask that you would refer this matter for further discussion at your July 6th meeting, that a similar appropriation be made for these services which have been detailed in our correspondence with the town manager.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Comment. It was your misunderstanding, then, that the town of Chapel Hill had agreed to provide these services?
Yes, that's correct.
And then you, the staff told you that, no, that they had not?
That's correct.
I'd like to just review for a moment with the staff what we have contributed to the Olympic Festival so far. I believe we've allocated $15,000 for landscaping, and what was the other provision, Mr. Manager?
Yes, we've allocated $15,000 for landscaping, and along with Raleigh and Durham, we have agreed to underwrite up to $100,000 of losses if they have losses, and we're certainly hoping they're not gonna have losses, but have all profits. Our share of that was somewhere around $16,000, $17,000 that we've agreed to underwrite. In addition to that, our Public Works Department has done lots of in-kind things, plantings and other things, but the big money items were those two.
Well, I would like to move referral, and with perhaps the recommendation as a possible option, to spend some of our hotel motel tax money for this effort, and then perhaps give that money to the Olympic Festival effort, and then that would free us of any further obligation if there were cost overruns of the festival. Perhaps the money might be more useful now to the festival.
Are there other questions?
Do you have any, what led to the misunderstanding? Were there conversations, documents?
There had been conversations with various members of our staff with members of the staff of the town, and it was one of these things that I think each of us had a different idea in our respective minds as we were discussing it, and in fact, in the correspondence which I submitted to you in the packets, I think, that you received, in one where I was asked to prepare a document outlining the cost for these services, and in that letter, because my assumption had always been that those services would be provided, I never asked that the fees be waived, because I was only informed that we needed to know what those costs were going to be, and because if I had, if I had realized that there needed to be a separate allocation on that, then I certainly would have asked at that time for a waiver of the fees.
I disagree with Julie to a certain extent. I think that the monies, they're about $16,000, is a pretty even draw with what we initially allocated to the festival, and I'd like to see, you know, I hate to get it complicated with a bunch of different resolutions to bring back, but I sort of like the town manager's response, the June 9th letter, and I'd like to have a resolution addressing that, those points, and coming to virtually the same conclusions, and then saying that if it does go over, if they don't need the $16 for, you know, money's lost, and I guess that we can give you the $16 for the police protection and the other things, but if not, then I'd sure like to have that put on that account.
I was gonna say exactly the same thing. I'm quite the same way.
A lot better.
So, go ahead.
Kathy, what are the expectations of the committee, the Olympic committee? You certainly aren't planning to make money, you're planning to cover your expenses and provide for all the athletes, and...
Absolutely.
And that, that's the way it's being handled, and so all of these donations are to help you realize that, coming out even, sort of thing, is that...
Certainly, that is our main goal, but, and if there is any additional monies that are made, then a portion of that, half of that, goes to the U.S. Olympic Committee, and then the other half, of course, we're a nonprofit organization, so any monies that would be made, the over-expenses, would just go to promote the amateur athletic effort and to host the kinds of events that, in promoting amateur athletics in North Carolina.
And in the past festivals of this sort, have there been, has money been made, or have you come out even, or how have they?
It's a varied history.
It's a varied history, okay, I was just curious.
Yes, it's mixed.
It's mixed. In recent years, has it been more favorable?
It's been mixed in recent years.
Has it? Okay, okay, I just wondered what we might expect.
Mr. Smith? Based on your estimates at present, do you feel that the three cities would have to pay any part of the $100,000 that they have?
It is certainly my great hope and anticipation that they will not.
Well, I mean, based on your sales and contributions, do you have, say, a veritable view of just how solid we are financially at the present?
Well, sales have been going very well. We announced last week... We announced last week, in fact, that the ticket sales had gone over a million and a quarter. It's something that I would, it's hard to project at this point, but I certainly hope that there would not be any request for those contingency funds.
And my next question is to the manager, I guess, to you. Based on, I believe I read somewhere that certain, on certain buses, people would pay. Do you have any estimate of what the revenue would be from those sales?
All the cost figures that we have given are net costs after having allowed whatever revenues might be collected for operating any of those facilities. And this particular U route that they are talking about is, all the athletes would ride just by showing their credentials. And other people may ride and we have estimated that and have given credit for that in calculating the cost.
All in favor, so high. Knows likewise, highest having.
I have an updated copy of my petition to address the town council and I would like to pass that to the town council members at this time, if I may. As way of explanation of why I'm here tonight, it is of course due to the fact that the KKK who has given permission to march in the streets of Chapel Hill and the community's time to respond to this demonstration was extremely short. And in the future, I would like to say that it would be quite considerate of this town council to give the citizens of this community more time to respond to what took place. I'd like to get straight to the petition and of course, if I'm giving time to explain why I brought this petition, I would also like to do that. I request for the town to draft an ordinance to prohibit terrorist groups' permission to publicly demonstrate in the streets of Chapel Hill within the guidelines of both the state and U.S. Constitution. We definitely have amendments in our state constitution which were drafted in the essence of protecting black citizens of this state from terrorist groups of its day, which was the Ku Klux Klan. And unless we uphold that amendment in our constitution, we are letting down our commitment to uphold the very things that we ask our citizens to abide by. I, Nacasio Martinez, a black male, being a resident of this community for the past 11 years, I am also a member of the Emmanuel Temple Seventh-day Adventist Church in Durham, respectfully request of the town council to pass an ordinance to ban all public gatherings in the streets of Chapel Hill of terrorist groups, groups that have both a historical and contemporary history of violent crimes against any citizen. I'd like to bring to your attention that rifles and handguns and concealed weapons was taken off of the persons of Klan members in Durham even before they reached this community. So we are giving permit to people who are intent on perpetrating violence in this country. If they were not intent on violence, I see no need for them to historically run around with guns, knives, bayonets, et cetera. Violent crimes to be noted as bank robbery, murder, crossburnings, lynchings, bombings, killings of children in Sunday school, et cetera. This ordinance should be drafted with the best of legal counsel available. We have one of the finest public legal schools, law schools, in this country right here. We have one of the largest gathering and constitutional experts right in this city alone. And I'm asking this town council to make use of their talents to protect this town from that kind of display. Citizen participation should be included as the townspeople may be called upon to support their local government if ever our will is challenged within the jurisdiction of the courts. The spirit of this request of the town council is to produce an ordinance within both state and federal constitutional safeguards to keep spreaders of hatred and fear out of our town streets. Unlike Skokie, Illinois, we have grounds for such ordinance, including the state and North Carolina Constitution recently ratified as late as 1971. Skokie did not have those laws and they attempted to draft laws twice. They fought in the courts, the Klan had the assistance of the ACLU, and that victory has put the Klan, marching and in high visibility, recruit other terrorists. I now cite Article 1, Section 12, Right of Assembly. This is our state constitution. The people have a right to assemble together to consult for their common good, to instruct their representatives and to apply to the general assembly for redress of grievances. But secret political societies are dangerous to the liberties of a free people and shall not be tolerated. Article 19, that would be Section 19, Law of the Land, Equal Protection of the Laws. No person shall be taken, imprisoned, or deceased of his free whole liberties or privileges, or outlawed, or exiled, or in any manner deprived of his life, liberty, or property but by the law of the land. No person shall be denied the equal protection of laws, nor shall any person be subjected to discrimination by the state because of race, color, religion, or national origin. The Klan is in violation of everything I have read so far. In addition to that first request, if it's in order, I read the second request of this town council. Request for Town of Chapel Hill to sanction and commission to dialogue addressing racism, educational neglects of handicapped and special needs children, and communities' responses to the plight of gay citizens, et cetera. The county passed a human rights commission. I do not know if the town of Chapel Hill has a human rights commission. The commission is to hold public hearings and make use of legal experts to draft ordinances such as to prohibit terrorists from public demonstrations and use of the streets. This forum should be sanctioned by the town, this commission should be sanctioned by the town council with the direct assistance of community residents and all levels of, of all levels of statute in our complex diversity. Too long, this community has professed an image which is not true. There have been many legal suits brought against even the university for blatant acts of discrimination. Hiring and firing enforcement practices, education processes, neglect based on race, class, physical or emotional handicaps, or sexual identity have all been used in gross violations of inlegal rights protected by the state and federal constitutions. Those are the two. I'm asking this board to consider these things seriously and before voting hastily so as to remove this from the public. There is much indignation over the presence of the Klan parading in the streets of Chapel Hill. It was, I was one of 2,000 persons who were in the street right at the Klan site. I understand there were at least 1,000 or more citizens at the First Citizens Baptist Church. We're talking about at least 3,000 people that even your law enforcement department will verify that were concerned about this. And I'm sure that other people showed their protest according to dictates of their heart. And I think that this is too urgent a matter not to be given serious consideration by this town council.
Counsel, a quick request. Don.
The matter which has been presented to us, I think, is reflective far more than the march that took place on Sunday a week ago of the true sentiment of this community. I think the fact that, that there were few, if any, residents of this community who were marching and many, many people who are residents of this community who turned up both at the citizens' rally and at the march itself to indicate their abhorrence of the views expressed by the Klan, I think is a true indication of how this community feels about it. There are many other people who stayed away and stayed away on purpose. I think following, as you indicated, the dictates of their heart, which were not to dignify the event taking place with their presence. And I think the predominant view in this community is certainly not one that would find any support with that, with that organization. The county is considering a proposal to create a human relations commission county-wide in scope that would include the town of Chapel Hill. And I think in a sense, that is an appropriate action for the county to proceed with. And I think in furtherance of that, the council would be well advised to indicate its support of that action and to participate in the development of it in some way. And I would like to suggest that this petition be received by the council and that we pursue with the members of the Board of County Commissioners, particularly Commissioner Carey, who is, who is leading this effort, the idea of creating a human relations commission that would be a joint enterprise of the town and the, and the county. And it could consider then which and what kind of action, such as that called for here tonight, would be appropriate. Whether this kind of ordinance would be appropriate or not, I'm not prepared to say. But it seems to me that the kind of commission that is being proposed here is a body that could consider that and bring back an appropriate recommendation, not only to us, but to the county commissioners. If that would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the petition be received. And then I would offer a second motion, which is that we formally indicate to the Board of County Commissioners our desire to participate with them as equal partners in the development of a human relations commission.
Okay. I have a second today. Ms. Smith, you have a question?
No, I just have a statement I made. All of you know, of course, that a few of us went to the chief police prior to the planned march to see what could be done, if there was any way that we could prevent the march from happening. Of course, we were told that we couldn't. Now, we have been, it's been indicated here that there are ways in which there are statutes that could eliminate that. So I would encourage the attorney to follow through on, on these suggestions to see just what we could come up with as a part of that particular request by the general. And if it's possible to, we can prevent it again, as we will get an ordinance based on the cited statutes here, Article 1, Section 12 and 19, if it's so appropriate.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Knows likewise, ayes having. Thank you for coming.
I thank you very much and I appreciate your consideration and concern in this matter.
My petition is called Stone from the Local Issue Sierra Club.
Would you like me to pass around?
That'd be fine. Just give it to the manager, he'll make sure that we get one.
Does this come down or should I bring it down or should I just forget it?
Just forget it, go ahead.
Forget it, okay.
That's fine.
In the flurry of developments over the past several years, it has become evident that the old Chapel Hill ordinances and regulations designed to protect trees, both individually and in groves, have been woefully inadequate. The Sierra Club is just one of many citizens' groups who are deeply concerned. As Local Issues Chair, I was asked to check into the status of our local ordinances and regulations to discover the following. So far as tree ordinances are concerned, in June 1985, Pamela Hughes sent a proposed ordinance to Roger Walden, the director of the planning department, and Alice Ingram, the then-chairman. The ordinance's main thrust was the designation of any tree with a diameter of more than 12 inches as a regulated tree, which could be removed only after receiving a permit. Removal was allowed if the regulated tree was dead, diseased, or otherwise dangerous or if removal was necessary for the proper development of the property. The ordinance also included severe civil and criminal penalties. As far as I could determine, that ordinance was never voted on, and I am not suggesting that it is a particularly good one, but its motives were good. On May 4th, 1987, David Taylor, our town manager, gave the town council memorandum on planning priorities, which had been outlined by Roger Walden, the planning director. Item 6 concerned a proposed tree ordinance with the information that Chapel Hill was contracting with Tom Perry from the North Carolina State School of Forestry. The stated objectives of the ordinance was, he was to write, were, "To assure that, one, clearing and grading be kept to a minimum on new construction sites, and, two, trees remaining on a site be given the best chance of survival." Now, the Sierra Club wishes to applaud the efforts of the town council, the town manager, and the town planning director to give Chapel Hill a much-needed tree ordinance. And we compliment them and we know the respected professional you selected to write it and he is top in that field. We are, however, very disturbed that the objectives given to him seem to be lacking in that they did not include saving specimen trees in groves. Now Raleigh has, incidentally, a tree ordinance, which he helped write, I believe, that do try to save specimen trees, very large old trees, or groves of unusual nature. I'm sure he could do it if you asked him to. So acting on the presumption that this was an oversight, we are here with petitioning the Chapel Hill Town Council to pass a motion that Mr. Perry be promptly advised that some mechanism for identifying and saving specimen trees and groves be included in the ordinance he's in the process of writing. If my information is correct, he's in the process, he hasn't completed it yet. The second petition is on revision of buffer zones. In the same May 4th memorandum referred to above, it was reported that a reexamination of the town's buffer requirements had been begun in response to concerns, I believe, from the development community, that our planting requirements are too stringent. The memo goes on to say that this project has been temporarily set aside as development activity has increased and consumed increasing amount of staff and appearance commission time. We have quite a few arborists who are members of the Sierra Club. I am not an expert, but I have consulted with them. And we came to the conclusion that this is probably true. What it seems to be is, it would appear that we have in our present buffer zone requirements, too many trees required per foot of buffer zone for healthy survival. So they're planting them and they're dying. You can consider either reducing the number of trees or increasing the width of the buffer zone. The Sierra Club is petitioning the town council to pass a motion placing a high priority on buffer zone revision with the recommendations that width be increased to accommodate the presently specified number of trees. Now we feel very strongly that this adjustment should be made as quickly as possible and we do understand that the present buffer zone regulations have been in place, I was told, approximately a year. told, approximately a year. And we're not suggesting a total revision until the town has had more experience with the regulations. But since it is clear right now that the relation between the number of trees required and the width of the buffers is unworkable, an immediate correction of this one area is requested. The very fact that staff time is being consumed by increased development activity tells us the need for correction is urgent. There isn't much point in locking the barn door after the horse has been stolen. In closing, I want to thank the manager's office and the town staff for their cooperation and for freely sharing information and concerns with us. We are grateful, too, for the town council's policy that permits citizens' groups such as the Sierra Club to petition the council on matters of concern. Together, we can all keep Chapel Hill a good place to live and keep Chapel Hill green. Now, the latter is a thing that the Sierra Club is going to be working on and to raise consciousness and raise money.
Turn around to the camera there, make sure they get it.
We have these bumper stickers. They don't have the Sierra Club's name on them, and as a matter of fact, there are other community groups interested in ecology who will be selling these, too. Anyhow, I was instructed, I'm not trying to, you know, I wasn't agreeing with the council, but I was instructed to give each of you one, a gift. We hope you'll put it on your car, on your chest, on your home, on your tree.
Come back next week, and I'll have one for you, too. No, that's a joke.
Who's that there?
Thank you very much.
You don't want to neglect that.
It is, isn't it? It's pretty. Thank you so much for coming.
Could you just, if you could put it on my back?
Receive it. Receive it. Oh, get, I have a motion.
I would be interested in, at some point, having that status report on the tree ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Knows likewise, ayes have it. Citizens, are there other petitions?
Yes.
I didn't recognize you without your jargon clothes on. Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe, members of the council. My name is Baron Day Cal. I'm here on behalf of the Chapel Hill chapter of the North Carolina Civil Liberties Union to respond only, or to address, really, only one part of the petition presented by Mr. Martinez. On behalf of the Civil Liberties Union, I would like to thank and to commend the town council, the manager, the attorney, the staff, the chief of police, and the police department for their fine work in regard to the Ku Klux Klan rally. I was also pleased to, with the activity that surrounded the rally that has been referred to, the rally at the Baptist church, and we were also pleased to see many members of the town council there. Members of the Civil Liberties Union were there in great numbers as well. I think that we have no, we obviously have no support for the ideas promoted by the Ku Klux Klan, and I think I like the comments that Mr. Howes made, that the predominant sentiment of the town is, to the contrary, I would hope that there isn't anybody in the town who would support those ideas. And this rally challenged our faith in the Constitution of the United States and the First Amendment, which clearly provides that the town is required, was required, to act exactly as it did. And I think that the way in which the town handled this whole matter and the way in which the citizens of the town responded to the whole matter demonstrates the wisdom of the constitutional provision. There are costs associated with the First Amendment to the Constitution. There are financial costs that the town had to bear, and there are, of course, costs in the indignation of citizens being addressed by ideas that are as repulsive as those that the Klan promotes. Nevertheless, the wisdom of the framers of the First Amendment, the Constitution, has been borne out because these ideas received their demonstration and received their response. And as somebody said at the rally at the first Baptist church, we can thank the Ku Klux Klan for having brought us together in a demonstration of community spirit that was as moving as that event was. And we have received at the Civil Liberties Union a number of calls from people asking, why couldn't the town stop the Klan from marching? And we've been somewhat surprised by the lack of understanding of the safeguards of the First Amendment demonstrated by these comments by some citizens. And in response to that, we have decided to devote the first public meeting of the fall to a discussion of the First Amendment right involved, to try to explain to the community what is involved. And we are, we appreciate the fact that the town of Chapel Hill has such a clear and demonstrates such a clear understanding of the First Amendment in its response, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
We're very close with our lawyer. Thank you very much. Are there other petitions that come before the council?
We should check them soon, though, if they. Mayor Potem and council, I appreciate you all giving us time to come before you this evening. We wanted to let you take a look at this petition that we put together before the July sixth meeting and before your break for the summer vacation. I'll just go through this and read it. If you have any questions that I can answer, I'll be glad to do so. We, as members of the downtown community, wish to express our support for the location of the Home for the Homeless in our neighborhood, the central business district. We realize that this has been a controversial issue and that our neighbors, that other neighbors have opposed the home within their boundaries without providing any alternatives. We also realize that the Interfaith Council and town have worked long and hard on this issue, and we are deeply indebted to them. We, as a business, community, and neighborhood, wish to help in the support and success of this, not just verbally, but monetarily, too. As a council, your efforts are well spent in searching for a solution to this need. Almost two years ago, the municipal building was chosen as a temporary shelter. Now the need is for a more permanent arrangement. With the increasing growth in our medical facilities and the lessening of federal aid and assistance, this need will increase dramatically before it stabilizes. The old municipal building certainly represents a historic landmark in Chapel Hill, both physically and architecturally. Having served as a location for all municipal functions for many, many years, we recognize and believe that it poses many problems in renovating for residential use. Cost will probably exceed all expectations, especially when following today's building codes for mixed occupancy and the rigorous health standards necessary for setting up a kitchen, something which I'm quite familiar with. We also recognize that any location selected should have a proper residential character and environment. It is of utmost importance to our neighborhood that there be adequate funding, careful management, a trained full-time staff, and proper maintenance. Failure in any of these will have a most negative effect on our neighborhood. Since we are in support of this proposal and since we are affected directly, we are petitioning the mayor and council to delay a final decision and permit us to review all locations, financing, cost analysis, and to make our recommendation to you. At the time, at that time, whatever decision the mayor and council make, we will give you both our moral and monetary support. We request that you give us until November to work with your staff in order to accomplish our common goal.
Mr. Ull, what might be accomplished between now and November, do you feel, that your group could do to, to address the concerns that you have?
I think that what we're looking at is possibilities of finding a location that, that would probably be a little bit more suitable than trying to renovate that building on a corner of Columbia and Rosemary Street.
So it would be your plan to look into alternative locations, then?
That's correct. That would be one of the things we'd look into. But within, we, obviously, you know, we stated that we, we think it belongs probably in the center of town. We're not trying to push it out into somebody's neighborhood. That's already been rejected so many times, we don't feel like that's a worthwhile proposal.
While I commend the group for this letter, I think it is asking too much of so many people who have worked so hard to get this thing off the ground, and to ask to be given from now until November is really against my thinking, because I have encouraged the town to move forward and get this thing started before cold weather. Now, they are saying, wait, which means we go another winter before we can have anything for these people, in a decent place, for these people to go. We talk about the cost. Who's going to bear the cost of any place in the central business district, or in the business district period? As I see it, we, we, we'll end it up recommending it being in some residential neighborhood, and then we'll go through another public hearing where we'll have tremendous community or citizen objection to it. I, I think we ought to, with all due respect to the group, but I don't think we can wait that long to get started on a shelter.
I know where Mr. Smith is coming from, and, and he said, when we heard the task force headed by Reverend Seymour, that he wanted it to be an action call and to move straightforward with this. However, I feel that, that this is, is a good effort by these people from the downtown area, and I think we should give them the opportunity to see what they can come up with. As I said the night the report was presented, I've, I've had questions all along about the desirability of this facility being in the old municipal building, simply because I feel that ultimately, if the thoroughfare plan is implemented and Pittsboro Street is extended, that, that building will be isolated. And I think that that will be a difficult place for people of this nature to use. So I, I think it has a lot of problems, and you've spoken to a number of them here in this petition, the, the cost and all of renovating that building. So, so I feel that we should give this group a chance to help the Interfaith Council find, perhaps, an alternative site. I, I would be very interested in, in what they might come up with. Now, I do share somewhat the concern of Mr. Smith that November may be pushing it a little far, because it does get into the cold, cold months. But, but I would like to see what they would come up with myself.
I'd like to follow on to Nancy's comments and say that it's a real delight to get a petition that proposes constructive action and doesn't threaten to sue if the wishes of the petitioners are not carried out. So that predisposes me very favorably toward this petition.
As I said, I commend the group, but this group, along with everybody in this community, was aware that the mayor had pointed this committee to study the, the location of a shelter. Now, my concern is, why did not you have your input with this committee at the time they were, they were doing this study? Rather than waiting till they make their report, then come up and say, don't carry it out? I think that is a disservice to the committee itself, who was working very hard trying to, and you realize, I think the committee realized, the members should have realized that the old town hall, because the paper carried, press carried, was one of the places under consideration. Now, my concern is, why did not you all have some input in the committee that, that the mayor pointed, so that you could have some input there, and maybe at that time the committee would have looked at a different site? It's the delay tactics that I'm concerned about and that I don't particularly like.
Mr. Smith, if I may answer you, a lot of us in the downtown area are somewhat preoccupied with our businesses. The first I knew of the choice or this as being a consideration was, I think, three days before the public hearing, which was held the day after Memorial Day. In the past ten days to two weeks, I've had a tremendous opportunity to speak with folks downtown, and you would be appalled at the number of people who did not realize that this was even a consideration at this time. And many of these people, obviously, are concerned that that is not the best and highest use of that facility, and that the, the initial proposal, I believe, was for a more of a residential-type setting for these individuals who have to, have to use this facility. And I think when these people leave there during the day or when they have to go outside, they're walking out to asphalt and concrete, there certainly isn't a, any kind of greenery to speak of or any open area for these people to do anything but be forced back into the street.
I just don't like the idea that was presented to me and to this board, that you, that you could locate a facility like this in a northside community over there, that the mental health space. That is the whole thing that I think will, will stir up a hornet's nest.
Well, I'm not proposing that.
Well, I'm just saying, but when you say it should be in a more of a residential community or nature, and that particular aspect of it, that particular location is one that was suggested by Mr. Gardner before this board, then it kind of burns me up to see a petition like this come in with the idea of putting, putting it in a residential neighborhood. And that was the suggestion when, when it was, when it was brought up before. And I don't particularly like that type of, of voice name, and I, you know, I'm sure that, you might not have known it, but I'm sure that somebody on this list of people, of business people, were not so busy with their business, that they didn't realize that, that the mayor had, had appointed Dr. Seymour and some other outstanding citizens in this community to, to, to make a recommendation on that.
Hey, Judy, then John.
I share Mr. Smith's concern with the possible delay that looking into this matter might cause. However, it's also our, it's probably wise that we have a procedure of not acting on things as they're presented, so I think it would be good for this to come back and for all of us to have a chance to look at the pros and cons of your proposal. And perhaps we could refer to the manager and bring it back for a discussion at a time when we've had a chance to think about some of the ramifications of following your suggestion.
John?
John? I was going to ask Mickey if, you know, when Dr. Seymour came and presented this to us, he said his committee looked into this, and they looked into alternative sites, and they just found there weren't any. Now, why do you have any reason to believe that you can find one where they couldn't?
Well, I think we put some people together. We had a couple of meetings downtown with people who are concerned about using that location, and I think you'd be surprised, if you can get the right people working on it, there can be alternatives that can be better than this one. I'm not suggesting one that would be less desirable, but more desirable, from the town standpoint and from the standpoint of individuals who have to use the facility.
So you don't have anything in particular in mind, you, you think maybe a different combination of people might come up with something?
Well, there've been some suggestions thrown out, and to be honest with you, I Well, there've been some suggestions thrown out, and to be honest with you, I think it's going to take, you know, a few weeks to, and possibly even a month or so to go through these and try to weed them out and come up with a good idea. You know, I wish we'd had more time between the time we started putting this thing together, and I promise you, it was not a delay tactic on our part. There are just some people that I guess were caught napping, so to speak, and I think it would be advantageous for the town maybe to consider this proposal. You know, I've worked some with the IFC, and yet I've never had them come to me and request any type of information or any suggestions about a site or even to make any kind of gift or anything. And I've gone to them on several occasions to try to work with them, and I think it's a group that deserves an awful lot of credit. And I think working with the downtown could be a benefit to both groups.
What was the schedule, Mr. Manager, for when this was to come back to?
July 6.
I think one of the things that concerns me about taking any action on this petition tonight is that it is stimulated by a commission appointed by the mayor. I think the mayor has strong feelings about it. He's unable to be here tonight, but I think wants to have a hand in all this. And I guess I would like to have some, on the assumption that he'll be back with us soon, and I have every reason to believe that he will be, I wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate to hold any action, withhold any action on the petition formally tonight until he's had a chance to look at it, and then perhaps some appropriate discussion and disposition of it can be made by the council at that time.
Mr. Mayor, we, this is scheduled to be calendared for action on July 6. We basically have the staff report prepared at this time. If this petition is referred to us, we will look at this and we will try to comment on it, but we certainly can't do a great deal of analysis of the petition because it really talks to time delays. And we'll have this on your agenda for July 6 along with this petition. I think you can consider all of it at that time.
Could I ask this, though? If it appears that the mayor is not going to be available at the meeting on the 6th, could we defer action on this until he is able to be back?
I think that would be appropriate, Mr. House, and I do know the mayor does have a very special interest in this particular item. But I did talk with him today, and he indicated to me that he was feeling much better and that he felt sure that he would be back by July 6.
May I make one further comment? The, lost my train of thought for a second. Speaking to Mr. Smith's concern and several others about the delay, I realize November may seem like a long way off. It's not really that far off if you know what it takes to try to put something like this together. I know the concerns that the IFC has had and what problems that they have experienced trying to put this home in a place that would be accepted. I would say that I believe when this, when the old municipal building was first proposed as a site for the shelter, it was told to the folks that protested the use of it then, the neighborhood people, that it was going to be used only as a temporary site. And so the folks that are there still have a shelter, and they will continue to have a shelter, is my understanding, until a final decision is made. So it's not like they're going to be out in the cold if a decision does not get made until November. And my guess is if you start gutting that building, they're going to have to find a new location for these folks to stay anyway. I certainly don't think with the major modifications, it would be necessary on a building like that, that they would be able to stay in the location. I think it would be next to impossible.
Question, then, the questioner.
David, are you going to ask that action be taken on July 6, that we make a resolution saying we want to use the police building for that use? Or are you going to recommend a series of public hearings and provide financial data? What's the extent of what you're bringing back?
We're going to bring back a fairly comprehensive report that discusses the request from the committee appointed by the mayor. We'll also discuss some other options that we have for the use of the building that have been brought up in the past. And we will present to you a discussion of those and several alternatives for your consideration and a recommendation, pretty much the standard kind of report and the way we do things.
But if we went ahead with, if we followed Mr. Smith and decided to go ahead with this project, would a public hearing be required?
If you elected to lease the facilities, then you have to have a public hearing on the terms of the lease, yes.
Okay, question? I think John had made a motion, tried to make a motion.
We refer.
With the, okay. All in favor, say aye. No's likewise, ayes have it. Okay. Are there other petitions to come before the council from citizens? Are there other petitions? Are there petitions from council members? I have one. I have one. We received a letter from Art Werner about not making the appointments to various boards and commissions tonight, and you know, those who have served with me for a long time, you know, Joe Nasty can remind you of this, that you know that I like to try to stay informed. Now, this was supposed to have been on the agenda, and we get this from the manager saying this was taken off and back to the system again. One council member shouldn't and have never had the right to take things off the agenda, so it should have been that we should do it at this meeting, and I would have welcomed the opportunity to take it off the agenda and make the appointment tonight. So I just remind you of that. I don't think that's the appropriate way to do it. If you're going to be absent, you can notify council members, and that's all council members, and then you can have it taken off the agenda. Are there other petitions to come before the council? Let's go to the minister.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a petition.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to request that Item 11, A, B, and C, Item 13B, and Item 15 be deleted from tonight's agenda. I'd like to ask that Items 11, A, B, and C, and Items 13B be considered tomorrow night when we meet for our RCD workshop, and that this meeting tonight be recessed until tomorrow night at 7:15 or either 7:30, whichever is more appropriate for you, to consider those items. Our hotel motel tax special legislation has not yet been ratified by the General Assembly, and I would feel more comfortable if we waited to adopt our ordinance until it had been ratified, and it should be ratified tomorrow. And so with your permission, I'd like to again have this meeting recessed to 7:30 tomorrow night, and it shouldn't take just a few minutes to take care of that item before we start the RCD workshop.
Okay, John?
As I indicated earlier, I won't be here tomorrow night. And hadn't anticipated that any business would be taken up. I favor the actions proposed here, and I favor the institution of these taxes. I would like to be here to speak about it. If it's going to be a close call, if it's not going to be a close call, I don't know that I need to be. And indeed, one, if I'm not here and the meeting is recessed, my vote would count aye.
That's correct.
That's right. That's a good reason why we are doing it. Okay?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Did I detect that you wanted to meet earlier than 7:30?
Now, I was just thinking it'd take about 10 to 15 minutes to do that if there are a few questions that have to be answered, and so I was just going to suggest 7:15 since you're scheduled to start work at 7:30 on the RCD, but 7:30 is fine with me, and it would take the first 10 minutes.
We'll get right into it.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, let's move along. Gotcha is over here just crying that the meeting is going too slow, and I hear him over here hollering, so let's move along, and that's why we're going to move along. We can pick up some speed. The minutes. All in favor?
One correction.
Correction. Okay, let's start with Gotcha.
Page five, second paragraph. Said that at that time he would insist that every, it should be non-conforming property owner, not every homeowner, I don't care about the homeowners that aren't affected by the non-conforming use, but I do care that every non-conforming property owner be notified of the proposed zoning change and told how it would affect their property. They're the ones that will come back in tears and with their lawyers later on.
Correct, noted by his clerk. Nasty?
My correction was just a spelling of a proper name, Charles Schaffer, not Shaffler. 11, page 11. He was speaking as a resident of the Gimbel area. S-H-A-F-F-E-R, Schaffer.
Correction, other members. All in favor, say aye. No's likewise, ayes have it. North Street subdivision, planning board recommends 1A, manager recommends 1B, R1C was denied. We had one person that wanted to speak. Mr. Manager wanted to give the overview of this again. We had this been proposed several times.
Mr. Mayor, basically you asked us to go back and work with Mr. Barrett to see if we could work out a compromise. I think what we have submitted to you tonight in Resolution B does represent a compromise. The large lot has been subdivided into five lots. The street, the K-values have been compromised at 7.5 as opposed to the 5 that he was asking for, and the 10 we were looking at. The one main difference primarily is still how to treat Rose Lane, or Rose Lane. We are still recommending that it have curb and gutter. It's a street of 15% slopes, and we think that that's certainly where you need curb and gutters on those kind of slopes, and that the cul-de-sac radius should be 40 feet. And the differences, we still feel strongly about those, and, Mr. Mayor, we recommend adoption of Resolution B.
Question, yes, come on down. Give your name.
My name is Jean Wilkins, and I'm speaking on behalf of the neighbors. I've talked to you many times before, it seems like. The neighbors are really pleased with this proposal. Basically, we have two questions or two issues that we'd like to get cleared up before we go away and say we're very happy with the whole thing. The first question is this, Lot 29 does not front on a town-approved street. That's fine with us. We do not want that driveway to become a town-approved street at all because it'll have a lot of cut and fill, and it'll come close to our house. If it is okay with the town that that lot doesn't front on an approved street, could that be stated explicitly? Would you go on record as saying it's fine that it doesn't front on an approved street? Because we don't want a later council to come back and say, "Aha, this must be turned into an approved street." So that's our first question.
Roger, do you want to comment? It is the case here that Lot 29 doesn't front on a street meeting town standards, and that that is acceptable in this situation because it's an existing situation. The ordinance states that when new lots are created, all new lots have to front on a street meeting town standards. In this case, right now, this is all one lot that has this access here, and so drawing a property line in this location does not increase the number of lots that have access to this. It's still, it's one lot now, and after subdivision, it would still be one lot that has access from that point. So as we read the ordinance, it is acceptable as it is drawn, and I guess I would suggest that by the act of the councils approving the subdivision and the record of these comments in the minutes, that that would indicate the council's acceptance of that analysis.
How do you get to Lot 29 at this rate?
There's a driveway up there.
This driveway, this existing access easement?
That's correct.
It's on the way off of North Street.
No doubt, actually, on this lot.
I take it that that driveway is now shown on...
All the appropriate maps as a public easement, is that right? I mean, a private easement?
That's true.
Not now used for anything except access to the Burns property, is that correct?
That's correct. And if the, one of the items that we were, that came up at the last meeting was, could that lot be further subdivided or what else could be done with that lot as it exists? And my response to you on the, it is acceptable as it is drawn right now, one lot having access off of that private easement. If the lot is large enough for further subdivision to take place, if application to subdivide that lot further were to come before, were to be submitted, it would have to involve the building of a street through that access easement, and therefore would be in our major subdivision category and would be coming before the council. So if I could just clarify on that, that we've got one, what this application is proposing is one 40,000 square foot lot right now. It's in an R2 zone, and so that 40,000 square feet is enough to, if it were to be subdivided or a proposal to come in for subdivision, the square footage is there. The problem is that there's no access onto a public street, and so a public street would have to be built, which would make it a major subdivision, which would mean that it would be coming before the town council.
What would be the maximum number of lots that this lot could be divided into, Roger?
In an R2 zone, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. The maximum number of lots on a Class D private street would be three, so it would be possible for an application to be drawn to subdivide the lot into three lots with a private street to be built through the easement.
So this lot could be divided into three with a Class D private street of about...
Of 20 feet in width, correct?
Correct. That would have to come before the planning board, the council.
I think that was my second question, but I'm not positive of the answer. How big is Lot 29?
40,000.
40,000. So it could be made into four lots on a public road, three lots on a private road?
Private road.
Okay. And would we know about that or not? We would know about it. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
To clarify, what he said was that it would be treated as a major subdivision. Thus would have to be, come before the planning board and the council for approval.
So we would know about it?
That's right. It's not, it couldn't be done upstairs.
Thank you very much.
Does that satisfy, as far as you can tell, your concern about this subdivision?
Well, we would ideally like to see only one house on that lot, of course, but our main goal is not to have that driveway widened and not to have cut and fill. And I think you've done as much as you can do.
At this point, yeah.
And if it were to be further subdivided, we would know about it?
Yes, you would like.
David, then, Smith.
Who underlines, who owns the underlying fee simple title subject to the easement?
Right. Is it privately owned?
Roger, do you know who owns it?
While you're thinking about the answer, the second question is, can we have a plat that shows access across private property?
If there's an easement for it.
And so anybody can use this easement that wants to, even though it's privately owned?
It's an easement for the benefit of Lot 29.
Okay, so my whole point is, can this plat, plat show the easement? Do they, does he own the easement? I mean, who owns the easement? That's the whole point.
The doctor who owns the P, but who has the right?
To use the easement?
The owner of this property that's proposed for something.
Okay, so it's part of this package.
What is the real present trade in Lot twenty-nine? But what's the size of Lot twenty-seven?
I don't know the size of any of these lots.
Is that, is that large enough to be subdivided also? Well, I don't see, the reason I ask that, I don't, I, they stop at twenty-six on this, this, there's nothing they said about Lot twenty-seven and twenty-eight, um, even though they, they are out there. And whether or not, we're talking about that one lot could be subdivided, can't be subdivided twenty-seven and twenty-eight? Can somebody tell me?
I've got, I've got the numbers.
They don't have the square footage.
The, the, uh, the sizes of those lots, uh, twenty-five, Lot twenty-five is about, it's about thirty-nine thousand square feet. Lot twenty-six is about forty-three, five. Lot twenty-seven is the largest, as you point out, it's about, uh, about sixty-five thousand square feet, just shy of that. Uh, Lot twenty-eight and twenty-nine are both at about forty thousand. So, and the, there is room enough, there, there is area enough on those lots for additional subdivisions.
So, so these lots, in answer to Mr. Smith's question, could they be subdivided?
Yeah, sure.
If they would go out on that, on that, right?
The problem with lots, with Lot number twenty-seven particularly, would be the frontage on that, on that cul-de-sac. There, there isn't room on that street for that to be subdivided any further. Of course, Lots twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, that's not a problem, but I, I would think that would be a very serious problem. That would prohibit any further subdivision of Lot twenty-seven, just as I, in my looking at it.
Her motion. Make it.
I've, since I had a lot to say about this before, I'm pleased to see that we have been able to negotiate and work out, uh, what appears to me to be a reasonable compromise to meet the interests of the various parties involved here. I'm very pleased to see that we've got more certainty for the neighborhood out of the plan. Uh, I tend to like the Planning Board's recommendation without prejudice against the staff. I, I feel that for such a short street as Rose Lane, uh, we probably don't need curb and gutter and we probably don't have to go to full twenty feet wide. We can probably, uh, get away with a, with an eighteen-foot street there. So what I would like to try as a motion is, uh, the Planning Board's recommendation, which is R-one A.
Discussion.
Well, I'd like to make a substitute motion of R-one B because I do prefer the recommendations of the manager and I, I would find it hard to vote for the Planning Board's recommendation, but not hard at all to vote for the manager's recommendation of R-one B.
Real second. Okay.
I wanted to ask some questions about R-one B. Um, the, the manager's recommendation, um, was made because he feels or the staff feels that the twenty feet is versus eighteen feet in the curb and gutter versus no curb and gutter and the forty-foot radius versus the thirty-four-foot radius, thirty-something foot radius for the cul-de-sac is, um, is a, a better solution for the land in there. Now, the applicant doesn't agree with that, um, and he says that he's calculated all these things or had calculations made for this road and, um, that, that he thinks his, his, um, proposal will be perfectly safe and adequate as, um, as a road. Can you, can you answer that?
Sure. Uh, George, you want to come on up and, so you might want to talk about turning radiuses and things of that type. We, we continue to have a lot of debate about curb and gutter and whether to have curb and gutter or not to have curb and gutter. Uh, and, but even those that are proponents of not having curb and gutter generally admit that when you have very steep terrain and slopes that you, oh, that's when you need curb and gutter to avoid the erosion problems that go along with just letting the water run in ditches. Secondly, you will not have to grade as much for, uh, the curb and gutter section as you do for a, a ditch section. So that's one, a couple of reasons, things in favor of it. As to the turning radiuses, we feel that forty feet is, is about as tight as you ought to have that turning radius. Uh, you never know when there's going to be something parked in there, uh, something in there. You need, you need a little room, not just the absolute minimum that it takes to turn around a garbage truck. You need to have some extra.
Is, is forty feet the normal radius of cul-de-sac?
Joyce.
What we find in all the new subdivisions.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but you think that the, the steepness and, and the fact that there'll be a lot of water flowing off this road is, is the reason for curb and gutter?
I think that's just one section of the fact that it's, uh, we've walked out there so you remember that's kind of a saddle. It's probably not as, as critical as in some areas where, um, you get a linear flow down a ditch. But, uh, the proposal here is for a narrow street with very minimal shoulders. So we have areas in town where the, the lateral flow causes a problem. It doesn't get away from the road, the edge of the road ravel. People are concerned with the water running down in their front yards and we have no way of controlling it and taking it out somewhere else without channelizing it somehow on the street in this case is a, we need to use that as a way of controlling runoff. Additionally, um, with real minimal shoulders and plus a narrower pavement width and no curb and gutter, if anybody parks there, they will tend to park almost in the middle of that street. Without a shoulder, you, you won't pull over to the edge and we've seen this time and again. So they'll park a couple of feet off the edge of the paving with eighteen feet of pavement. Literally one car could block that street just to getting up in the cul-de-sac. So it, it's, uh, we just felt there's a lot of factors that, that extra two feet in curb and gutter would, would end up, uh, netting the town and I, quite frankly, think they'd develop for a better street for that application.
How many lots are certified this cul-de-sac?
I believe it's six, correct me if I'm wrong.
Six lots.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would, I, I favor, um, the Dr. Gottalk's proposal. However, if there are not the votes to pass that, I would, I would, um, I would just like to put out an idea and that is the idea, um, that, um, the Lane Kendrick, who was the visiting consultant in town last Friday, uh, showed in many of his slides throughout residential sections throughout the United States is the use of, um, round vegetative islands inside cul-de-sacs. And this is widely used throughout the United States and I think it's, uh, this would be a, a possibility and I've talked with the developer and he would, uh, be amenable to that kind of proposal. So I just toss that out now.
Okay, sure. Good on you. Uh, Kendrick also pointed out that there are many streets that are, uh, in, in subdivisions that he's worked with that are only one lane wide, uh, where parking is prohibited on the street and in fact just becomes access for those few lots. So, um, I, I would assume that drainage here would be controlled by some kind of swales on the side, uh, and, uh, if you had no curb and gutter, that is, it's...
Um, I don't believe that's in town. I think it's just, the, the way the lots go, the water's just going to go down the slopes.
Okay. And how long is, how long of Rose Lane? How much, how much collection area would we have there to worry about?
Approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-four feet from the centerline of North Village Street to the back of the cul-de-sac.
So it's not a long...
No.
Not a long street.
The middle amount of water is generated. If the staff has done calculations, I'm sure they agree with that.
R-two B is on the floor. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I ask Mr. Dr. Gottalk a question?
Go right ahead.
The, uh, the Planning Board's, uh, resolution has the, uh, five, the K factor, K factor of five. We, we think the staff and the developer has agreed to a seven and a half and does your motion, is the Planning Board's as written with a K or five or would you be willing to accept the seven hundred point five?
Oh, no, I certainly, uh, I guess I was misled in reading my memorandum here, which said that the only differences were the twenty feet wide, the curb and gutter and the cul-de-sac radius of forty feet. It didn't, it somehow, I, I missed the more subtle statement that it reflects the street standards originally proposed by the applicant. I certainly would not want to turn back the clock on your negotiation of the seven and a half K, which was part of our initial charge to you. So, uh, I, uh, if we get back to my moving, uh, one A, then I would move it with the inclusion of your seven and a half K.
All right, thank you, sir.
Question.
What's that we have on the floor then? One B. Substitute. All in favor of a substitute motion by Pascrene, say aye.
Aye.
Gotta raise your hand. All in favor of substitute motions, one, two, three. Those who oppose, say no.
No.
No. One, two, three, four. All right, the main motion's back on the floor, which is...
Let me, let, you may make a specific statement that I, I wish to...
Please do.
Make sure that it's amended to include the seven and a half, uh, K standard. Um, I, I, I actually did miss that in the, in reading the recommendation. Is that all right with the secondary?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No's likewise?
No.
No. Gotta raise your hand. All in favor, say aye. No's, ayes have it. Okay. One we got rid of that's been here for around, for a long time.
That's the important thing.
Spring Crest subdivision. Planning Board recommends two A. Manager recommends two B. Mr. Manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is the first time this one's been before you, so I'd like to ask Mr. Walton to, uh, give a full staff report and recommend.
Send it back. You've got to go back. To remind him that this is his first time.
I'm sorry, I remanded it.
That's cute, John.
I would like to describe this application for subdivision to you along with the description of the application for subdivision, which is the next item on your agenda. So I'd like to, um, beg your indulgence on that and be talking for a few minutes about the two of them together, since they are adjacent to each other and many of the issues are identical. We're proposing a, a road network that is coordinated between the two. So what I'd like to do is take the first couple of minutes and talk about the area in general and describe the setting for both of these subdivisions and then not repeat that for the second subdivision. So, let me begin by, uh, talking from our vicinity map over here. Weaver Dairy Road coming down, uh, there's its intersection with Irwin Road and on, on this particular map, uh, north points in this direction. You, you, I guess it was about a little over a year ago, uh, you approved through the joint planning process Chandler's Green subdivision, which has access on the Weaver Dairy Road in this location, comes across and also has access onto Sunrise Road up there. The two properties in question tonight, uh, the first, uh, item before you is for a subdivision called Spring Crest and that's shown as shaded in blue in this location. And, uh, butting it is another piece of property which follows it on the agenda subdivision application called Covington Place. I wanted to talk for a few minutes from this, this larger map to give you a, a feel for the area. Uh, the area which shaded in green here is Resource Conservation District. And so although there's not any RCD property on Covington Place, there is some on Spring Crest and, uh, and that's, that's important to keep in mind. The, uh, there are no, no roads of any, uh, of any consequence really that have taken, that have been built yet in this area. It's largely undeveloped. We have included in your packet a, uh, map that suggests some road networks for this Basically what we're talking about is having a, a road for Covington Place that will come in and loop around in this location. And we're talking about a Spring Crest road that would come in here and stub out to this, in this location and have another road that would stub out in this location. What we are, uh, trying to accomplish here is a, is a road network that would look like this. The proposed extension of Weaver Dairy Road, uh, I guess we're calling it sage road extension, is going to come through in this location right here. The Covington Place property includes part of this proposed right away for that sage road extension. And looking at the topography in the area, looking at the RCD, looking at how properties might develop, we spent, uh, some time looking at all of these subdivisions around here and what we are proposing as a road network for this area has a main collector road that would come off of this new proposed sage road extension, come through the Spring Crest property, uh, cross the RCD in this location, then cross the RCD in this location up here, uh, as it, and intersect with the Chandler's Green road that's coming through there. What that would do for the area is have this main road coming through here. When this property comes into development, we're proposing that the, this Covington Place stub out in this location connect up to this proposed road, the, uh, which would then be stubbed out to Spring Crest, would run through the site. When this property over here comes into development, uh, a couple of things would happen. You notice that the, uh, RCD pretty much splits this, this property over here into, into three pieces and trying to look to the future there with a stub out that crosses the RCD here and comes out to the Spring Crest property line in that location. We're proposing that then that wind through and connect into Chandler's Green. We've talked to the, uh, Chandler's Green applicants and about, uh, aligning their stub outs, that there is a stub out in Chandler's Green in this location, aligning that with this road that would be coming through. This road would serve as access to this clump of property that is pretty much surrounded by RCD and would involve crossing of the RCD in this area in two locations that we think are the best locations, which is right here and right there. So that, I, I wanted to go over that because when we get to description of the road networks in these subdivisions, uh, I think you need to, to keep that in mind. We're talking about sage road extension coming in here, main road coming off and tying in up there. And so what we've, when we talk about Spring Crest, we're going to be showing you a stub out in this location and a stub out in this location that we're recommending. And when we get to talking about Covington Place, we're going to be talking about a stub out in this location, uh, that we would anticipate eventually connecting into that main road. So now I will move on to talk specifically about the first...
Question. One, one quick question, Roger. Delighted that you're trying to put together this road network out there, which I think is a critical need for us. Is that the location of the Chandler's Green as approved or are we going to have to make some modifications to make that work that way?
The Chandler's Green stub out is actually a little closer to Weaver Dairy Road. Uh, and what we have done is to, uh, talk to the Chandler's Green applicant and they've been agreeable to, uh, to move this stub out north or south depending on, uh, on what we do with Spring, with Spring Crest and how this, how we come up with a collective roads plan here. And the, uh, that will not have to come back for, uh, to you for review again. That, uh, that kind of small shift in the stub out, whether it's here or a few hundred feet to the north, uh, can be done administratively. Okay, talking, let's move on to Spring Crest specifically. Is, is podium in the way? This is the Spring Crest subdivision, blow, uh, blow up of that site there. Couple of major points I wanted to highlight before I go to the memorandum. Irwin Road coming along here, the property has, touches Irwin Road in two locations. Uh, this northern entrance here where the main road will be coming through and then it also, uh, touches Irwin Road in this location, privately owned and separately owned piece of property, uh, parcel in that location right there. Pardon? It's a, it's a single, it's a single lot. I don't know, uh, yeah, I would guess, I would guess it's about, about a acre. The, again, here's the, here is that road network, road going through the property that we talked about there. Resource Conservation District is shown in this location. So we are talking about... road that will cross the RCD. So, main road coming in off of Irwin, cul-de-sacs off of it, stubout, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention this stubout in this location that would, that would provide the access to this property, so that there doesn't have to be a separate, another separate entrance coming in off of Irwin Road here. So, this property would be, could be accessed by a road that would be coming in through here. Then this road coming through, cul-de-sacs over there, cul-de-sac over here. Just briefly highlight what are the, how the, how the topography of the site lays, and again, if you can see the outline in black there of this site, Irwin Road runs along here. We've done this on occasion before, the, the warmer colors are the highest points in the site, and the black is the lowest portion of the site. So, you can see how the, the stream runs across this part of the site, and there's Resource Conservation District in this location. There is a bit of a knoll up here, and then the property drops in, in those locations. And the, the main road that we are talking about will, will come up through here. You have in your packet the planning staff report that describes the application in some detail. What I'd like to do is just, rather than read from that report, is just highlight what we see are the four key issues that we would like to call to your attention. The first is to point out to you that this is a cluster subdivision that's being proposed. There are, lot sizes are being slightly reduced under our cluster provisions, and the applicant has shown some planting concepts that we think are attractive and that would achieve some of the cluster effect. I wanted to point out to you that the, in the, when talking about a cluster subdivision, the recreation, calculation of recreation area requirements is just a bit altered and just a bit unusual from what you normally see. The way to calculate recreation area requirements for subdivision that is a cluster subdivision is as follows. The recreation area requirements, if it weren't a cluster subdivision, are calculated, and, and so call that recreation area number, number A. And the, the second calculation that is made is to take the reduction of all of the lot sizes from the minimum land area and add all of those up. So, again, this is a cluster and the lot, some of the lots are slightly smaller than would be allowed in this zone. So, the second approach is to take all of those reductions in minimum lot size and add all of those up, and that's sum B. Whichever one of those is greater becomes the required recreation area for the subdivision. In this case, by far, the larger number is the recreation area that would be required under the standard calculation, and so that is the recreation area requirement that we go with. The second issue I wanted to highlight for you was the sewer issue. We point out in the memorandum that there are two ways that this property could be served by public sewer. One involves a series of easements and coordination of several developments, and the second alternative involves a pump station. The applicant has been working with Owassa, and it is not certain yet which of those will be the ultimate solution of providing, to provide sewer to this property. The preferred solution would be the, the gravity system that would involve coordination with several property owners. If that is not possible, then the alternative solution is a pump station. And in any case, the final water and sewer plans and utility plans would need the approval of both Owassa and the town manager prior to final plat approval. Third issue I wanted to highlight was the RCD issue. Point out that there is, Resource Conservation District crosses the, overlays the property in this location, and we are talking about a, the street A that will cross the RCD. We think that the street is necessary in that location to provide the road neck, road network for the entire area, and we have suggested to you that if you agree that you so state in the resolution of approval that, that it's the intent for street A across the Resource Conservation District, which would clarify the fact that that crossing, that street in that location would be a permitted use, although it would very likely need a variance. What we've also included in the, in the resolution recommending approval is that our standard comment that any variances that would be needed would need to be obtained from the Board of Adjustment prior to the approval of a final plat. And then the fourth key issue is one I've already described, which is the collector road network for the entire area that would tie this subdivision in with Covington Place and in with Chandler's Green and in with undeveloped properties that abut this property. With that, I'll stop and take questions.
On the stubout from this development that goes up to Chandler, Chandler's Green, could you just trace the, the path of that stubout as it starts on Weaver Dairy Road and as it'll come back to Chandler Green and then through the subdivision? Just, I, I want to just get an idea how secure is that road is.
Okay, well Chandler's Green, this line here is drawn in accurately. Chandler's Green comes along like this, and then that road that goes through Chandler's Green connects up with Sunrise. And so, the, this road that we are talking about would come off of the Chandler's Green property, cross the RCD, come through this property, and then come through Spring Crest, and then come out on Sage Road Extension in this location. So, there is a, once Sage Road Extension is completed and this road network would be complete, this would be a, a loop that would come off of Sage Road here, come up through, and then come back in that-
What I would like is reassurance from you that this would be a collector road and not a cross connector. That is, it wouldn't turn out to be used by other people to get somewhere? I don't, I don't think so, from what I can see.
I don't, I don't think so either.
Okay. Because, of course, the proposed Sage Road Extension won't be built for a while.
Right.
May I ask you?
Talking about the recreation area, is, is it purely a passive recreation area? All greenway and that sort of thing?
Well, the, the, our recreation area requirements for subdivisions don't require any active improvement, so all it is is a reservation of land for recreation uses, and so I, I don't know what the, if any amenities would be ever developed in this recreation area or not. There is shown on the plan a 50-foot easement for a greenway that we would expect to ultimately be developed in this location.
The, the rest of the land is rather steep, or are there areas, flatter areas in there?
There are some flatter areas. This is the, this is the recreation area in this location, so it's, it, it is not particularly steep, although it is low.
It's low but, but relatively flat. I noticed there are two pedestrian easements in, toward that greenway, and I wondered how, I mean, they'll get down to the creek, will people be able to get across the creek? Is, I'm, I'm not familiar with how, how big-
Thank you for pointing out the pedestrian easements. I think that that might be worth pointing out on this subdivision and again on the next. What we have done here, as we have done in some other subdivisions that have come to you, is try and build in some easements in a manner that would facilitate pedestrian traffic, both within this subdivision and, and possibly as a pedestrian network to other properties as well. There are pedestrian easements that, basically that come off of the, come off cul-de-sacs in this location and this location that would get down to the recreation area. So, from, from this part of the property, there would be three points of access to the recreation area, three, three points of access to the recreation area. One is along the, along the road, the second is from this cul-de-sac, and the third one is from this cul-de-sac. And then the, from these properties, there is another pedestrian easement that we're suggesting in that location, and then at the road. And then the other pedestrian easement that we are suggesting, both on, on this subdivision, is one in this location. This is the Covington Place subdivision, and so we are recommending that a pedestrian easement be shown there also to allow pedestrian traffic.
There's a couple of things in this project that's concerning, and-
Two of them are major, in my view, that it seems that we're deviating from policy once again. The other one is a question on recreation area. The first one is, I, I've never seen us propose two roads, a road to cross the RCD twice in a collection system. I thought our whole goal was to not cross the RCD. And to see us proposing a road that will cross it not once but twice, it doesn't seem, seem to be following what we've done in the past. The other thing that I can't even, I don't understand why we're, why the town's proposing this, is that if I heard it once, I heard it 100 times, and it's also been used for justification why some of my proposals aren't, were not acceptable. And that is, this is the first subdivision I remember having one access to it. I've heard it countless times that you can't own, can't have one access, that you've got to have at least two accesses to it in case of emergency vehicles, and here in this case, only one access is being proposed. The stubouts, they don't mean anything until the property's built on either side of it, and I have a problem with that one too. The third thing, on the recreation area, just to clear up what you said, Roger, did you say that if they had built a subdivision at R1 and R2 densities, that they would be giving the same amount of recreation space as they are now at a cluster development?
Yes. The, the requirement would be the same.
Well, let's get into numbers. What, what are they giving now in square feet, and what would they have to give if they were building at a typical subdivision?
Okay. Okay. Numbers. The requirement for recreation area on this site is about 200,000 square feet, 201 and a few.
For what? If it was built at a regular subdivision?
Right. And so, that's, that's taking our recreation area ratios and multiplying them times-
You don't have to, I just need the numbers. What about the, a cluster development?
Okay.
What are they proposing?
They are proposing a reduction in minimum lot sizes, and if you add up all of those reductions and take them all together, it adds up to about 90,000 square feet. And so, what the ordinance says is that in this, in this situation, then you take whichever one of those is greater, either 200,000 or 90,000, and make that the recreation area requirement for this proposal.
So, they have to give 201,000?
Right, that's correct.
And, and that's what they're giving, but in the meantime, we're allowing them to reduce the size of the lots.
Well, actually, I guess the, I think what, what is proposed is about 260,000.
So, they are giving-
They're giving more than is required.
Well, the, the impression I'm getting is that they would give the 260 anyway, and that by using this cluster subdivision business, and as, I guess in the next proposal, you're just allowing them to reduce the size of the lots. I, I don't see that we're getting anything. The town's not getting anything in return for this. I, I, am I, am I mixed up? I mean-
No, well, you're, you're correct in that the, the rec, in this, in this case, with the kind of lot size reductions that we are talking about, which are reasonably small, although they do add up to a significant figure, in this case, that clustering does not increase the requirement for recreation area that they have to provide. You're right. And that's, that's, that's the way the ordinance is structured.
I know, and it's a real problem. And also, I think the council has the flexibility to vote on allowing as to if it should, can be a cluster development or not. Isn't that, is that correct? Isn't it something that has to be approved by the council as far as it being allowed to be developed as a cluster?
Seventy-two, the ordinance, since the council may approve a cluster subdivision if it finds that amendment lists those findings, one of the recreation space, but it gives the council discretion to approve a cluster subdivision under those circumstances.
But, in this case, I don't see any benefit in approving the cluster subdivision. I see a great benefit in not, because we'd have larger lots.
Again, I find myself in somewhat disagreement with Mr. Pasquini. I think that everything that we have talked about in terms of planning improvements for the town, we have constantly been reminded that what we are doing is not providing enough affordable housing. And to insist simply to have large lots for the, for the sake of large lots goes totally in the face of trying to provide more affordable housing for the community. It is, it is as though the community benefits solely from having more expensive places to live here, and I don't believe that that's the case. I don't think our tax base is so weak that we have to zone out people who want to have affordable housing.
Can I respond?
Go ahead.
Frankly, David, I, I don't know if you've been following the real estate pages or have been looking at the, the square footage on these lots, but I don't think that we're talking about affordable housing here. I think we're talking about housing, and these lots are going to go for quite a few thousand dollars over what, I think 40,000 or 50,000. We're talking about differences of a, a couple thousand square feet, and we're also talking about acres that have been divided at least four times or a little bit more to get these buildable lots. I don't see where the, where there'll be any difference in price. I sincerely doubt that we'd see a differential. I don't think these houses are going to be any more affordable now with this plan than if they built it at R1 and R2.
Go ahead, man. We're not going to have Ted, Ken, and Bob do.
Okay, no. I don't want to prolong the debate, but I just, I would like to have it clear in the record that you're saying that larger lots will cost the same as smaller lots, is that-
I'm saying that the differentials that Roger were talking about in this subdivision, it won't make any difference in the price, and that you're not, you're not building affordable housing with this subdivision. You're building housing that's going to meet a market in Chapel Hill, and believe me, that is not going to be determined by low to moderate income housing. If that's what you determine affordable housing, then I think you're way off the mark.
I'm interested in getting the, understanding the answer to your question, David, which was initially, does a cluster subdivision, I, I can, I like the idea of a cluster subdivision if the additional space that these smaller lots no longer have are put into recreation space, and I assume that that is so. Is that right, Roger? Or not? Is it only, only part of it is realized in extra open space?
Nothing's realized in this development in open-
Nothing is. So, so the recreation space just exists and it's over, it's, it's a greater amount than is required?
The, what is required here is 200,000 square feet, and what is proposed is 260,000 square feet.
But, but what, yeah, but what would they have to propose regardless because of the RCD? Would it, I mean, is that extra 58,000 square feet because of cluster development, or is it just because of the slope of the land? If they came in with an R1, R2 subdivision, would they have to still propose that same amount of recreation space? That, that's the bottom question.
Yes, the extra, the extra 58 or 60,000 square feet of recreation area is not being shown on the plan because it is required because of a cluster. That's correct. Right, so it, we're not getting anything for cluster. They'd have to come in with the same amount anyway, or they would anyway.
Okay, now do I have a motion? I'd like to move the manager's recommendation, which is R2B, including the condition regarding landscaping.
Do I have a discussion? A little bit more? If not, we will move. Roger's been up there all night, that was enough.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're tired, you're tired of listening to me. I forgot, I forgot to mention something. If I could-
Go ahead, Roger.
The, the, there are a couple of different resolutions in your packet, and I apologize for not mentioning this earlier. One of them calls, and the differences between them deal with the- One of them calls, and the differences between them deal with the right-of-way and improvements along Irwin Road. The manager's recommendation had suggested to you that Irwin Road be improved to one-half of a 41-foot cross-section, and that the right-of-way be one-half of a 70-foot right-of-way. You notice in your packet, the Transportation Board had recommended that Irwin Road be improved to one-half of a 65-foot cross-section and one-half, in one-half of a 90-foot right-of-way in these two, in these locations. Since the, this project was originally going through review, if I could go back to this vicinity map for a moment, we have begun generating some new numbers with our thoroughfare plan. And the, Irwin Road in this location is pretty much all well, all set now with its right-of-way and road improvements. But in this location, our numbers are showing higher levels of traffic in the future than we had been projecting previously. And so although the, we would like to offer to you a suggestion with the manager's recommendation that instead of one-half of a 70-foot right-of-way in these two locations, that one-half of a 90-foot right-of-way be asked for, that's something that would allow for future widening over and above what we see now, further on down the road. We didn't agree with the Transportation Board's recommendation that that widening actually be accomplished right now. We think that the, that ultimate widening of Irwin Road is pretty far off in the future, partly because it involves some work on this bridge here where Irwin Road crosses I-40. But we think that it might be prudent to ask for that half of the 90-foot right-of-way instead of half of the 70-foot right-of-way. So I would suggest to you that in the, in the resolutions that are before you, that you consider changing the half of a 70-foot right-of-way to half of a 90-foot along Irwin Road. Sorry, I didn't mention that earlier.
But the road would be still improved?
To half of a 41.
Oh, okay.
Roger, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about traffic on Irwin Road between Weaver Day Road and 15501. Has the state highway completed their improvements of that intersection, 15501 and Irwin Road? Weren't they doing some improvements at that intersection?
They wanted to do improvements at that intersection that were required as a part of the Europa Office Park, and those have been completed. Now, that intersection is one of those that is included in the group of intersections that we wanted to get the work done on with our bond money and working with the state. However, the new legislation goes through, that's now pending in the NC House, we will not be able to put any money into that.
All right, let's go back then to the extension of, what's that, the road coming by Burnhol?
Sage Road.
Sage Road. Now, the right-of-way for the extension of that, does that right-of-way go all the way through? Are we getting right-of-way all the way through that to Weaver Day Road, or just a portion of it?
From this project, we're not getting any of that right-of-way. We have laid out that right-of-way, and as that property develops, we will get the right-of-way. Or if we can convince the state to build it, then we will talk about...
But it is a state, a road that the state is to build.
That's correct.
That is my concern.
And when you get to Covington Place, that right-of-way cuts across just one corner of Covington Place, and that resolution does call for that part of the right-of-way to be dedicated.
But it's, a lot of these projects, are any of these projects dependent upon Sage Road extension? I mean, right now, as far as traffic is concerned?
Not so far as having at least one means of access. They don't get the second means of access until some other road is built.
Okay, all right. It kind of got off the track a little bit because of you council members starting debate prior to the developer giving the presentation. And so, yeah, you can't, so give a short, you heard it.
Short and sweet, I'm Granger Barrett for the applicant here. I'd like to make two points, and limited to two points. The first is that we concur with the manager's recommendation. We've worked very closely with the staff and all your boards and commissions up to this point, and there's total agreement with the recommendations. The second is to talk about, David, the issue of lot reductions being added to the recreation space. We think we're in pretty good shape there, and I'd like to disagree with the number given by the staff. That may have been from an earlier version of the plan, I'm not sure, our engineer's in the back. But in your packet, we have laid out for you the reduction in lot sizes. It's 47,000 feet, square feet. The increase above the requirement is 61,000 square feet. So even if you, although 201,000 is the required recreation space here, even if you add to that, the reduction in lot sizes of 47,000 square feet, you still come in greater than that amount. And I'd like to point out that this area, although it's RCD area, is flat and is not marshland, it's just lowland, but it's not wetland, and is to be deeded to the town of Chapel Hill. The 10-acre parcel next door, if I may show it to you, this parcel right here is owned by the family that sold this land here that is Springcrest and will be coming in for subdivision approval this fall. Their recreation area requirement will be about an acre, and they have, I will be representing them, and they will be deeding about an acre along the creek also to the town of Chapel Hill outright. The point to be made, though, is that the recreation space being deeded to the town is greater than the combined total of the net lot reductions and the requirement for recreation space in your development ordinance.
Well, what would it be if you come in for regular subdivision?
201,000 square feet, Mr. Pasquini.
I don't believe it. I don't, I just don't believe that you would have...
Well, Mr. Pasquini, that's what your ordinance says.
I know, but that's not, I'm saying, with the lay of that land, I don't see where, where you, well, I won't drag this point on, but I can't see where the developer is giving the town the extra 60,000 square, square feet of land that they wouldn't have to do anyway if they came in under R1 and R2. The reason that you're doing is the RCD.
Not really, because during, one of the requests made by the staff, out of the Development Review Staff Meeting, was to bring the lot lines back out of the RCD to roughly the RCD line. We could put back yards in the RCD and kept them natural. So the lot lines have made the recreation, were drawn in closer. That's where the clustering occurs in the R1 area on the other side of the street. If I can just finish my sentence out.
Go ahead.
So what you get is a wider linear park being given to the town as recreation area, on average, probably about 200 feet.
But in the RCD, Granger, you're calling, it's two different, you know, we're both saying the same thing. It's the RCD that's determining the amount of recreation space, and if you move that lot line in or out, it doesn't make any difference, you still can't build on it. But I will just drop it, because I feel I'm in the minority on this one, and I'll be in the minority next one, and I was in the minority on the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Don't feel bad, I'll bone in the minority. Go ahead, ask the question.
My first question is, would you comment a bit on the landscaping plan that you have?
Yes, I'd love to. In fact, before we even applied to the town, we retained Josh Gerlitz as a landscape architect. About one-third of this property is a lovely rolling pasture, which has stands of trees in it, but is somewhat open. And we intend to spend about $50,000 planting street trees. They won't be in the street right-of-way, but they'll be right next to the street right-of-way. We'll have a median with trees at the entranceway. We'll have landscape buffers for plantings at key street intersections. And in addition, we'll be doing extensive amount of tree, what's termed in your memorandum, reforestation in the pasture area. We're real excited about that. I think the Planning Board is excited about it. I'm excited that Josh Gerlitz is working on it.
I'm very pleased by the planting street trees. I think that's a real addition to your development. I have one other question, and that is, would you be amenable to designing islands in the cul-de-sacs to be done to standards by, to be approved by the town engineer and by the Director of Public Works?
Yes, we'd be real excited about doing that. I heard a comment that you made about that earlier, and we were going to pursue that with the staff to see if we could handle that in the plans administratively, but we'd love to do that.
Go ahead, Naz. Y'all talked about that earlier, didn't you? Go ahead, Naz, I'm sorry. You can't play when you're leaving, can you?
I just wanted to ask a question about maintaining the pedestrian easements. This will be done by the Springcrest Homeowners Association. And is there, I guess maybe I should ask the staff, is there any reason we need to worry about that? I mean, does our, do our inspectors go out and make sure these easements are clear and...
I'll respond to that. We, I've thought about that, and I think what we'll probably be doing, I'll have to talk with the engineer and with Josh Gerlitz, but I think from a lot owner's point of view, when they buy a lot, they want to know that it's out there. That means it has to be visible, otherwise they're going to think that those are strange people going down there. I think railroad tie kind of steps headed on down the east to the creek is probably the kind of approach we would use. Yes, the Homeowners Association would be responsible for maintenance, but right now, we'd like to use some kind of natural materials and a natural pathway to keep in harmony with the area, but also to tell people that it's there. Yes, ma'am?
I think my motion's on the floor, and I have been reminded by Roger that it should say a 90-foot right-of-way instead of a 70-foot right-of-way, and I'm happy to propose that amendment if my secondary would accept that.
So it's R2B?
R2B with a 90-foot right-of-way dedication, one-half of a 90-foot.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No's likewise?
No.
One no?
Aye.
Pass. Covered in place, covered in place subdivision. Mr. Manager?
Yep.
Manager recommends R3A. Planning Board recommends R3A.
Mr. Mayor, this is the first time this subdivision's also been before you. Roger's already discussed it somewhat as he discussed the previous one, and writing to the Collector Roads Plan and why you have certain stub outs. But Roger, if you want to make a presentation of the specifics of this one, then we'll get into that.
I'm determined to kick over this microphone before the evening's over. I'll leave this up just a moment to remind you that we're talking about this property now, immediately adjacent to Springcrest. Point out to you on the vicinity map that the Sage Road extension cuts through the corner of that property, and what we are talking about is a road that would come in at this frontage on Irwin Road, loop through the property with a stub out to the west in this location that we would intend be connected to this Collector Road as it comes This is the specific plan for Covington Place. Again, Irwin Road, in this location, the main drive comes, comes through here, curves around, there's another road comes along up here, and cul-de-sac down here, and this is the stub out I was talking about that would, we would anticipate in the future being extended through to that Collector Road. In this corner of the site is the alignment for Sage Road extension, and the applicant is showing the right-of-way that is to be dedicated there. We are recommending dedication of that right-of-way. We are not recommending that that portion of the right-of-way be, that that portion of the road be built. We feel that it's a very small corner there, cannot be integrated into the design of the subdivision without the other pieces of it being in place, but we think it's very important that that right-of-way be dedicated. Recreation area is located in this area of the site. We are recommending that a pedestrian walkway be, be shown to connect the subdivision to that Sage Road extension. One thing I wanted to point out to you is that there is a, what we call the triangular remnants of land over here that is, that doesn't really fit very well. It doesn't fit into the subdivision, and building of this road in this location would cut that off, and we are recommending that that be dedicated, that small piece of land be dedicated, deeded to the town for public purposes, either right-of-way or open space that would be adjacent to that road once it is built. Parks and Recreation Commission recommendation is in your memorandum, and they are recommending that some fencing be constructed along, along that new road when it's, in anticipation of that new road with landscaping on both sides of the fence. Let me highlight for you, again, I won't go over the planning staff report in any detail, but just try and hit the main points that we raised in our cover memorandum. And four points that we wanted to highlight were lot sizes, sewer, collector streets, and sage road. I've already mentioned to you Sage Road, we are recommending that that right-of-way be dedicated. I've already described the collector street pattern, and in connection, if you recall, with Springcrest right here, we had a pedestrian easement coming in this location, and we are recommending here a pedestrian easement in that location to facilitate walking and pedestrian movements back and forth. Sewer situation is exactly the same as with the Springcrest subdivision that we just described to you. Two alternatives available, one involving an extension of gravity lines, but it involves cooperation of about three or four different property owners. That's preferable. If that cooperation can't be obtained, then a pump station would be the second alternative. And we would recommend that, our standard stipulation, that the final utility plans be approved by Owassa and the town manager before approval of a final plat. Which brings me to the issue of lot size and clustering. Again, the, as we described in the last subdivision, this is cluster proposal that is before you, and the lot sizes are small. The, as you look at the plans, the lot sizes, many, many of lot sizes are in the 67 to 7,300 square foot range, one or two below that. We have said in reports to you before that we feel that there is a need for small lot subdivisions in Chapel Hill, that it replicates the development pattern in some of the older areas of town, but that it should only be done in, on a site that has a topography that could accommodate it. We believe that this is such a site, it's, it's close to the major, major transportation corridors, the site is relatively flat, there's a knoll here that drops off, but there are no areas of particularly steep terrain. And we mentioned in our memorandum that we believe that this is a site that can accommodate those small lots. I'll stop there. I've got a block in that tonight. Same, same comment as before, the recommendation before you suggests a 41-foot cross-section for the frontage along Irwin Road in one-half of the 70-foot right-of-way, and we would suggest to you that that would more appropriately be one-half of a 90-foot right-of-way.
The class C streets, Roger, versus class C. I understand the terrain is virtually flat. If it's class C, we're not really even talking about K-values, we're talking about less shoulders. Is that correct? A three-foot shoulder instead of an eight-foot shoulder? So would there be any practical reason for not going to a class C street?
Let me, let me look at that one while you're asking the next question.
Go ahead and get the applicant. Manager, applicant?
Phil, do you want to?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Phil Post, I'm representing Gray Moody and James Fountain with the Covington Place subdivision. I wanted to just point out, oh, I'm sorry, just wanted to point out the major areas in amplifying what Roger told you, the, and I have a sketch here that I colored up and I didn't get a chance to mat it, but the recreation area is here, it's about almost 56,000 square feet. And then this area to be dedicated as part of Sage Road, which would be the right-of-way dedication, as well as another small triangular piece to be dedicated to the town, is almost another acre and a half. And I had a plan of talking about it first, but I did want to talk about the lot size versus the clustering concept, because, am I not coming through? The idea behind the clustering concept was to not permit, the clustering concept... The idea behind the clustering concept was to not permit, the clustering concept does not permit any increased number of lots and in Covington Place, we don't, we are taking advantage of the clustering provision, but it does enable this subdivision to have any greater number of lots than you would normally be able to have. When the ordinance was written and my understanding of it was that the trade-off would be that there is a reduction in lot size, there's also reduction in street frontage and that those reductions would be made up in open space areas. Now, the benefit to the town by reducing street frontage area is that there's less street and therefore less water line, less sewer line, less public infrastructure that needs to be maintained by, on a continuing basis, by the public agencies, that there is no increase in density to the benefit of the developer, that the lessening of any lot areas are put into a common area and that the benefit is that there is an ability to economize the lot situation so that you end up with a greater number of lots fronting on a lesser amount of area that needs to be maintained in the long term by the public agencies. And so we have taken full advan, or have taken advantage of the clustering concept here and are asking for your support of this. Now, the other benefit that accrues from this that I need to point out for this subdivision is that it's a planned community. I'm struggling here to figure out a way to get my plan up on the board and I think I'll need a piece of tape if I can borrow it. Is there any tape available or a pen of any kind?
Where's that?
Okay. Give me a slice of tape.
It's not a restaurant. Stop eating over there.
Thank you.
The, this is a planned community. The lot sizes are smaller. About half the lots
are smaller than the R-2 10,000 square foot gross land area. But we do have, it's a planned community in that each home site has been planned for, there are a total of six different styles of houses that will be built throughout here. These lots will not be built and just sold as individual vacant lots. They will be sold, they will be built upon by the builder who is selling them so that the buyers will be buying a particular sized house and the lots have been specifically designed to fit with various house designs and not just the house designs themselves, but with the location of driveways and the location or lack thereof of individual garages. And so it's planned to the extent that even though some of these lot sizes have been reduced below the 10,000-foot R-2 minimum in the, under the clustering concept, you know, we have, do have an exact house design and driveway design and have taken into account the topography of the individual lots to account for that so that the lot basically fits with a house and that the houses together fit together so that there's a variety from the streetscape of not having the same style of house and factors like that. So it's, to the extent that it is a cluster subdivision, it's more than that. It's a planned cluster subdivision where the houses and lots are mated together along with the driveways and the utility connections and other things. Now, I would point out that, and I'm sure this question will come up, so let me just address it as to the relationship between lot reduction and recreation space because the, under the recreation concept, we're required to dedicate about 55,000 square feet. Now, we're dedicating in this one central location 55,600, so it exceeds it by a small margin. Now, the net reduction in lot sizes, which would be the second number, that I believe, Mr. Vasquini, you would be interested in, is about 47,000 square feet. That is the amount that the lot size would be reduced by. And I would point out in respect to that, that this area, which is the right-of-way and this other piece of land that will be dedicated to the town, and this is something that we have incorporated our plan since day one. We knew walked in, in our initial discussions, which have been very fruitful with the town staff, this is well over 60,000 square feet. And I would submit to you that if we were able to come in without having to have given away, so to speak, or having to have dedicated this land, that the combination of these two parcels would have far exceeded and do far exceed the total, if you add together the net lot reduction and the recreation requirement. In fact, it exceeds it quite a bit.
Is the extension of Sage Road active or passive recreation space?
Doesn't it have to be one of those?
The recreation space here in green will be a passive recreation area. It'll be under the control of the homeowners association.
That's 55,000.
That's 50, almost 56,000.
Right, and you're required to have?
Little under 55,000.
So it's kind of a dead even, but you're still reducing 21 lots. 21 lots are still below the 10,000 square feet.
That totals about 47,000 square feet, but this area, this area right here is over 60,000.
But I thought, I thought that for clustering, that that land has to be used for passive recreation or recreation space. I mean, you can't expect people to be playing on Sage Road.
He's not talking about that being recreation space. He's talking about quid pro quo. He's giving you the right-of-way. He's got a plus subdivision and he's giving you the right-of-way for?
But that doesn't meet the requirements of our ordinance.
It meets the requirements of the ordinance. I don't know why you even brought it up. He just brought up a tangential item that's got him in trouble.
But I, well, go on. I'm sorry. Why don't you finish your presentation?
He's got in trouble.
The, in addition to the, I was trying to make it more clear, but I guess I got one.
You hope they can.
The other thing we're trying to do is not, as I say, it's a planned community and I wanted to just to point out the planned nature. Many subdivisions have an entry treatment and landscaping. That's not unusual, but we are proposing extra landscaping in, so that we feel like there'll be a very special streetscape to highlight the recreation area and as well as just to point out some extra landscaping that's provided to buffer the recreation space and the Sage Road right-of-way. This was, this landscaping here was part of our negotiations in dealing with the Recreation Commission and it was something directly came out of that, but I wanted to just point it out. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Thank you very much. Any question?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Post, I talked to you earlier today about my concern with the buffer along the recreation area and its proximity to the future Sage Road and there'll be a chain link fence or presumably some kind of fence along there and you'd also plan to have plantings. And I would just like to add to number eight stipulation, which requires a type D buffer, that the plantings be reviewed by the Appearance Commission or by Dave Rossler or someone on the staff before approval because I think it's important those plantings are such that they really will screen the chain link fence and provide a buffer for the homes that are along there for the, next to the future highway.
That's acceptable to the applicant, yes.
Okay. An answer?
I'd like to ask a question about the walk, the six-foot pine bark path?
Yes.
That goes from the street to Sage Road and I'd like for you to give me some, obviously people want to walk along it from one road to the other road, but give me some background on that. Why do you want to walk onto Sage Road?
That was a request on the part of the staff and we simply added it to our plan.
Yes, I'd like an answer. And why particularly in that spot? I mean, it's just sort of cutting the recreation area in hand. I mean, maybe that's the best place for it.
There is, and there is no reason why that couldn't be in another part of the, of that area. We thought that it was important to have a pedestrian access to Sage Road extension there. We expect to have sidewalks along Sage Road and I would expect that at some point there would be bus service along there and we thought that that would be an important convenience factor for this subdivision instead of having to have to walk out on Irwin Road and then Irwin Road is not over.
Do, can I see down here sidewalks along all those streets? Is that?
Uh, no, they're, these are class B streets. There is a pedestrian accessway here that will go then through Springcrest. These, the sidewalk would be along Irwin and along, eventually along Sage.
But it just looks to me like from this distance that there's an extra little margin around that road and I thought maybe that's interior.
Well, I'm showing you, we're showing the street itself and then the drives. If there's, if there may be some confusion with the right-of-way lines, but there's no sidewalk shown.
Must be the right-of-way lines, but I'm thin.
When do we expect Dave to get the extension of Sage Road? You have any timetable?
Mr. Smith, we do not have a timetable. Remember, this is one of those priority roads that we have. Let me divide Sage Road into two pieces. The piece by Brindles is included in that package that we were trying to put together that I talked about earlier tonight. And the other part of Sage Road is also a part of that package, but not a part of the intersection package. And it's one of my priorities. It was submitted to the Department of Transportation this year at our, at the Transportation or TIP hearings and we're just in the process of trying to get it on the list. Waiting for DOT to build it, I would say 10 years. If, depending upon how much we can get of the right-of-way from developers and how much we can get developers to build and then depending upon how much we're willing to build, would be how much we can shorten that time.
I guess my concern is the fact that we are, we are asking for certain improvements along that road, chain that fence and all that kind of stuff and it's, the road is 10 years off. I'm wondering, you know, who's going to, who's going to maintain all this stuff we asked for along there? Will the homeowners association maintain it?
Well, they would, they would maintain the entire area. They'll be maintaining the recreation area and this is part of the recreation area. The fence and vegetation on both sides are part of that as well as the landscaping this area as well as landscaping at the entrance.
So long as it's going to be, going to be maintained. I don't see any sense in putting it out there in the woods if nobody's going to maintain it because that's what it is until that, until that piece of, the road is built, it's in the woods.
I understand. We've talked about that with the recreation community.
And I want, you know, I don't, I don't like to throw stuff out there and it not be maintained.
I was going to ask Mr. Post if you had any objection to the smaller roads within the subdivision or the ones that aren't, the main entrance road being class C roads.
Well, I'm happy you mentioned that. Our plans consistently called for, and we believe our interpretation is correct, that this road B, and we numbered our roads A, B, and C, road B we've consistently shown as a class C, so that would agree with your suggestion. We do believe however that roads A and C here, under the definition of your design manual, should be class B and that's the road.
I would like to suggest that time change in the document resolution.
Why would you suggest a change different than the design manual and what the engineering is asking for?
I think, I think we're in agreement. Design manual indicates that this road should be a class C and these other two should be B. That's what.
It's not a change. I got the impression by your comment that it was a change.
The one above is now B, but you would refer it to be C. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's shown as C.
It's called road B, but it's.
Okay, it is class C. It is class C and that's what you're asking for. All right. And that's what it is. Okay.
Two questions. First of all, we were asking in the stipulations for a fire flow report. That's the first time I've ever seen that. What is a fire flow report?
That's a, an test that's done by the fire department or the engineers to determine the water pressure in that area to make sure you got adequate water pressure for firefighting purposes in that area.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to note was we're going to have curbside garbage collection out here and that's because they're steep lots.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
It's, it's said somewhere in here, this is a flat subdivision.
That's right. It is. Okay, let me just explain this to you.
Okay.
You're just saying two sets of recommendations that came through the town staff about 40 days apart and one didn't have that stipulation and one does. And it indicated to me, and I questioned very seriously, what's the difference here because this site is flat. The Public Works Department, I'm just speaking, is, in between these two projects, determined that they would put a standard stipulation into all the recommendations that they would call out for certain lots of time to file plating if they were steep, would have a notation put on the lot that this lot may have to have curbside garbage collection. Now, the Public Works Department thinks there is no lot in Covington Place that will have to have, and there's no one in town staff that I know that believes that any lot in Covington Place will have to have that notation on the final plaque. But I'm told by Public Works that that particular boiler, what we call a boilerplate stipulation will appear on all future subdivision regulations, recommendations coming from Public Works.
But now.
So it leads you to believe that there is a, there is a potential problem here on Covington Place, but I'm assured by Public Works and by everybody else in town staff that I've spoken to, that no one believes that that stipulation will have to be exercised in this particular subdivision. It bothered me when I first saw it and I attempted to get to the very bottom by talking to everybody that had anything to do with that.
So this is only if there happens to be a steep lot. Will that be put on?
First of all, I want it understood very specific that this, this board and the town, against my better judgment, have so indicated that we will not have any curbside garbage collection in the town of Chapel Hill. Now, I proposed this green canned concept a long time and it's been shut down by both the board and by the citizens. Now, I don't intend to see a subdivision or anything, as long as I'm on this board, come here in which we have to have curb, a curbside garbage collection. So now, I don't care what Public Works has no right whatsoever to require curb side garbage collection because the town has said no and they've said it so many times against my better judgment that I'm going, I'm going to, from now until November, I'm going to see that there's nothing happen. So you can, you can pass that on.
Okay, Dave.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Board is ready.
I'd like to move Resolution R-3A with the manager's recommendation that we amend the 90, the right-of-way required from 70 feet to half of 90 feet.
Would you be willing to entertain a friendly amendment to add something to stipulation eight that says that landscaping will be reviewed by a suitable body or Appearance Commission?
Yes, I would be.
You know what I got there one time in the General Assembly is he said, well, friendly amendment. He said, yeah, but it's not coming from you.
I accepted perfectly friendly.
Took you a little while to catch on there, didn't you? That's all right, Julie.
Okay.
All 3A.
I want to make sure I understand that that's to be reviewed by whom? Because stipulation 15 says it's reviewed by staff. Now, if it's to be reviewed by someone else, I just need to know.
Dave Rossler would be the staff I would assume. That would be all right with me actually, but Appearance Commission could review it also. I'm not, I don't feel strongly.
All 3A with amendment and the friendly amendment.
And I just have one comment because I know David may feel lonely on this and I want to say that, that I think that this subdivision seems to be very well planned to me and the lots are very small, but there certainly seems certainly to be some careful consideration to landscaping, which I appreciate. I've seen some plans of the, pictures of the houses and the houses are actually very much or even maybe very similar to the houses that were done in Covington Place in Greensboro, which was the subject of an affordable housing. I don't know whether they got award, but it was a seminar that some of us attended and a very attractive home. So what I'm encouraged about is we may actually have affordable housing in Chapel Hill and these may be attractive houses as well.
Mr. Manager? Mr. Mayor, to clarify the question earlier about road A, road B, and road C. being what they, what they are. Stipulation five is intended to cover that and to, and to write that the way I think we all agreed here earlier. Road B is to be Class C. So we'll make that pen and ink change. I assume that was, if that's satisfactory. Dr. Goschow, that's what we discussed here earlier.
You're saying that the resolution just needs to have a typo in it that make it conform to the plan?
To the plat, that's correct.
And since this isn't apparently clear to me, I beg the forgiveness of the council to dwell once again into the numbers of this subdivision. Let, let me give them to you and what's, what's on the plan. It says developers required to provide 55, 665 square feet. Now, the minimum recreation required space, if it was built as a regular old subdivision, would be 54, 891. So there's, they're giving us approximately 775 square feet more than what they would be required to do if it was a, just developed as a minimum subdivision. In return, we're allowing them to build 21 of the 39 lots, or 53% of them, below the minimum square footage that's required for this zone. Is that correct?
David, that is correct by the ordinance. Raf and I have made a note over here. We believe that the intent was that you would have the recreation space as required for the underlying zoning, plus the amount by which the lots were reduced. But that's not what the ordinance says, and they comply fully with the ordinance. We think when that's something we've got to go back and take a look.
So there's a problem with our ordinance?
It appears to be a problem with the ordinance.
And also, this is what Northwoods or JP's development used.
And we, we heard what you were saying and what, and the line that you were taking, but the ordinance doesn't fit that line. But we think that was part of the spirit and intent, and we've got to go back and check the legislative history and see if in the typing we might have dropped out a line or something, but.
I, I couldn't figure out why the numbers didn't work out. I guess that's it.
We have R3A on the floor with amendments. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, with one vote in no. David. Okay. Amendment to the joint planning area land use plan, R4, Dr. Gotcha.
This, this resolution attempts to ask the council to conform our position to that taken by the county in working out the compromise on extending the transition area in the joint planning area land use plan. And we had talked about being on record as supporting our transition area extension up to the full extent of the Bolin Creek Basin. And when the county examined that, the county planning board decided that they would prefer that that be a two-stage extension rather than a one-stage extension. So they have a, a, a transition area one and a transition area two. And transition area two is not developed at urban development standards until 75% of transition area one has been developed. That affects mostly Carrboro's transition area. It affects a small portion of the Chapel Hill transition area. The Orange County Planning Board also recommended, and the, and I think the commission is prepared also to recommend that that transition area extension be contingent upon Carrboro providing a binding agreement that it will not seek to extend water and sewer lines into the University Lake watershed prior to the completion of the Owassa carrying capacity study. And second, that both Chapel Hill and Carrboro will provide at least one seat on their planning boards and their boards of adjustment for representatives from the transition areas. And that would be consistent with the legislation that's been adopted by the General Assembly, allowing us to enter our joint planning agreement. So if you agree with that, then I hope that you will see fit to adopt this resolution, which simply states those in formal language.
Make the motion, Mr. Smith.
I, I so moved. Suppose at the, suppose at the end of the study, it is suggested, I recommended that Carrboro be allowed to extend water and sewer into the watershed. What will happen then to the transition area? Will any changes be made in case they do?
I suppose that is a possibility, that one outcome of the carrying capacity study could be a different position with respect to, to water and sewer lines. And we've not thought ahead to that contingency in terms of how that might affect the transition areas. One way I suppose it could affect them might be in terms of densities or, or timing, either one of those. But we've not really constructed that scenario to see how that, how that might affect it. So we don't know the answer to your question. Further discussion? Pass Queen.
I had two questions. One was this business about the Duke Forest buffer. And it says all properties. Is it just any old property, or is, is there a width to this buffer that's going to be rural versus transitional?
I, I think the intent there, and what David is, is bringing up, is that another feature of, of the extension of the transition area is that it stops short of butting up against the Duke Forest properties. So that all properties adjoining Duke Forest on the transition side will remain rural buffer rather than having the transition area densities. And I think the intent there is just to draw those along existing property lines, so that any property owner that had either the good fortune or the bad fortune, whichever point of view they might take about how they wanted to use their property to, but the Duke Forest lands would remain in the rural buffer rather than in the transition area.
And the second question I had was, you know, this business about no urban development in transition two until 75% of transition one is developed, are they going to be counting houses or?
Well, they mean.
What are they going to be doing here?
They say either developed or subdivided for development at densities of one to five units.
So they are going to be counting lots and houses?
Lots and houses. That's right. That's the intention.
What would happen if a, a prime development like the last three that we looked at wanted to put into the transition two versus, and, and they hadn't built out on transition one yet? It would, it would be dead in the water?
They, they couldn't get permission to develop at any more than one unit per acre until they meet the 75%. These were all compromises that were worked out by the county planning board and the county staff to make that extension of the transition acceptable.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Further discussion? Most is on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Mr. Mayor, we have a, an item, a report on the preparation of Olympics that shouldn't take very long. Can we have that next so that Mr. Lupe can go home and nobody can sit here all night?
Very good. And I wish.
Let's go through all this.
Right, I wish we had have thought about early on, so we apologize to you for that. First of all, let, let me do some thanking. Thank you very much for the effort you've made on this and getting this to us. You're doing a good job. You don't even have to run this time.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Come along. Go right ahead. Status report on the festival that's coming.
I'm Chief Andrew Lupe and Chairman of the Appearance Commission. The landscaping that has been done, have been done on the funds that the town provided for us and have been planted by Mark Kepler Landscaping of Fitzborough. The town Chapel Hill is watering those either early in the morning or late in the afternoon. So if you don't see them being watered, they are being watered. That's one of the main concerns, I think, of a lot of the people of the planning. We have raised $3,375 in addition to the $15,000 that was given. One is through the adopt tree program that we initiated, and then the village companies have the campaign going to raise additional funds for the hanging baskets for downtown. The Downtown Association has ordered the flags and banners for the flag poles, and Carrboro has ordered theirs, and they're to extend all the way through the town on the street side. On the back sides of those poles, there will be some potted hanging plants on a bracket that will be an additional to the, to the pole that's existing, and will be a permanent feature for those poles, so that any time in the future that we want to do this again, or if we can have funds to continue this, maybe on a more permanent basis for the spring and summer months, that that will be there to provide for that. The Olympic torch, which will be coming through Chapel Hill on the 16th at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, a ceremony has been planned for that at the post office, and we hope a good deal of you and most of the community can come out for that, at least as many as for the recent downtown event. The, a local artist, who's Al Freger with the UNC Department, I mean, Art Department, has donated a structure that he has designed, which is a metal art piece that he's going to adapt to hold the torch that will be lighted by the owner who comes in to Chapel Hill to remain lighted during the period of time the Olympics festival is going on. Basically, that's about the extent of what we've accomplished thus far, and we, we've had a lot of participation from the community and good response on all of it.
Judy? Oh, I just want to thank you, Lieutenant. It's been enormous effort that you've put out, and I know you've talked to so many different groups in town and gotten everyone to, to help you, and I, I want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith? May I suggest to, at the Appearance Commission, not stop trying to beautify Chapel Hill when the, when the Olympic is over, but continue to find places that we could add some amenities to, to, to the city. One of the things that I've suggested a long, long time ago, but, you know, there are spots that I think we can still beautify even though, even after the Olympics.
I have a good plan to try to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have other questions.
Just two, three years ago.
We'll go back to item number nine now, the report on the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Study. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, we're pleased tonight to have with us Mr. Gene Gill, who is the Civil Engineer with the Corps, and our own engineer, George Small, that'll come forward to present the report. Mr. Gill?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Gene Gill. I'm with the Wilmington District Corps of Engineers. I'm here tonight to discuss the Corps' study of the flood control problems here in Chapel Hill. The town of Chapel Hill requested the Corps of Engineers to undertake a study of the flooding problems in 1984. In 1985, the Corps did initial appraisal of the area, which led to a reconnaissance report. This report was completed in January 1987 and prepared under the Continuum, Continuum Authorities Program, Section 205 of 1948 Flood Control Act as amended. Our study area included both Bolin and Booker Creeks. Our main damage center on Bolin Creek is located between Franklin Road, the U.S. Highway 15 and 501 bypass. Virtually all the commercial buildings in this area were constructed with the first floor level at or above the 100-year level flood. The commercial development on Booker Creek are concentrated at the East Gate Shopping Center, which is located over Booker Creek, and it starts receiving flood damages at the 50-year level flood. The alternatives studied here were centered on channel modification, snagging and clearing, levees, and modification of U.S. 15 and 501 bypass. To discuss these alternatives, I'd like to call on another civil engineer, some former engineers who did the studies on these alternatives, Wes French.
I'll hand you over to page three in the report that is included in the package we gave to you. And I'll just run through each of the alternatives that we, this, we worked on. On Bolin Creek, we looked at about four different alternatives, probably more often on, but anyway. The first one was a channel improvement, and the, the main points of interest there was limited by sewer line located on the south bank of the stream and by Estes Drive on the north bank. So the maximum channel we could put in there with the criteria we used is a 35-foot bottom width, and that wasn't enough to give us any kind of decent reductions in flood stages. So we, the bottom line on that is that we get a B/C ratio of .35. It's comparing the damages that occurred on the stream versus the cost of what we put into it. Damages, as Gene said, were concentrated in the University Mall and in two apartment complexes, Brookfield and Camelot Village. Alternative two, clearing and snagging, that was just a cursory thing. We didn't get into it much because you could tell if you couldn't get a channel to do the job and bring stages down, surely clearing and snagging wasn't going to get it for us. We did look at levees, and the only place we looked at a levee was the concentration of damages in Camelot Village because of its low order of frequency flooding. It begins flooding at about four-year frequency flood, and there's only one building that does that, and the others kick in at about the eight, 10, 12-year frequency. There are enough damages there that we did consider a dike around the area. According to the criteria we deal with, we can only consider what's considered called a standard project flood, which is just like the never, never flood dike, and that's because it protects residential properties. Under the new public law that just got through Congress and the president signed last fall, there's possibility of considering lower levels of dykes, but I still don't think that we'd have favorable recommendation on the dike there. The dike that we did consider was about 2,000 feet long, 10 feet high, B/C ratio of .6. Any of the other areas, University Mall or the Brookfield Apartments, the, it's just not engineeringally feasible to consider dykes in those areas. We thought about the 15-501 bridge crossing of the creek and whether or not it would cause enough backwater effect to, we'd be able to reduce stages by removing it. So we did model that being gone, and we didn't get enough reductions to, to even to cost out what that effect would be. On non-structural measures, as are listed at the bottom, that considers primarily floodproofing. And what we did there was look at each building in the floodplain, screened them out, and looked at those that had a potential for economic feasibility. And what we discovered was that there were four buildings in the Camelot Village complex out of some 13 or 14 of them that were economically feasible for floodproofing, and this would be accomplished by an earthen dike combination with a concrete flood wall that would have gate closures on it. One of them had a B/C ratio of about two, three others about 1.2. There would, since we can't consider, it wouldn't be a comprehensive plan for the floodplain altogether, there wouldn't be a federal interest in pursuing this floodproofing scheme. It'd have to be responsibility of the owners. University Mall, we looked at floodproofing yet, but found out after doing the work that it belongs to the North Hills Corporation, and being a single property owner, there's no, no federal interest in helping that. They have a very high level of initial flood damage, but because of the value of the facilities, especially the contents, the, it does have a favorable B/C ratio to floodproof it to a 200-year frequency. Any of these floodproofing measures, and even without floodproofing measures, a flood warning system and a preparedness system or plan is needed, and as we understand from the comments in the memorandum written by your staff to you, those things are in effect as, as of now. On Booker Creek, same kind of investigations, and we only costed out one alternative, that being the attempt to make a diversion across 15-501 and run it in a channel along 15-501 down into rejoin Booker Creek on the downstream side. The cost of that was prohibitive primarily because of the culverts needed under 15-501 to carry the floodwaters around. We looked at the idea of flood walls around the upstream end, but the, they're not feasible because you'd need to put protection on the downstream end of the place too, and then couldn't get but just a. couldn't get but just about two feet of protection is all you could get. The only thing that we found there that would probably be of some interest to the owners of that facility is that the storm drainage in the parking lot goes into that culvert that conveys the creek under the place. The culvert itself sets, the top of it is a little bit higher than the floor level of the stores, so the parking lot is depressed. These storm catch basins are about four feet below the top, so when the creek's coming through and it gets about half full, it can start flooding the parking lot and flooding cars there. That could be prevented with a very small investment of putting flap gates or some kind of a closure structure that wouldn't let the creek come back into the parking Those are the things we just, oh yeah, the non-structural stuff, floodproofing on the East Gate Shopping Center, and that was 99% of the damages that we evaluated on Booker No alternative that we tried. We had to address each of the wings of the place as a unit, and none that we tried had a better than a .7 B/C ratio, and those all consisted of flood walls that were about three feet high, and probably wouldn't be very acceptable to the folks who run the facilities like a lot of access and good visibility. That covers the alternatives that we considered. We have to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Members of the council have questioned Smith.
So am I to assume then that you're saying that the people will just have to suffer from the flooding because there's not much that can be done to correct it?
On the scale that we address things like, our primary things we look at are channels, dikes, and detention, some kind of place to store some water before it gets dirty. In our look, we didn't, you notice I didn't talk about any detention facilities, and the reason I didn't is because in our look over the upper basin, we didn't find any areas that weren't developed that we could store water, so we didn't get it, we didn't find a place that we could put any. And dikes are just too expensive with the amount of damages we had, we could look at channels, and those things just didn't come through. We couldn't get the reductions out of the channels that we needed to help people out. And so basically, we are saying that there isn't a federal interest. We don't have a way of helping this problem with the tools that we have at hand, and I don't think, except for floodproofing, and even in that, it's only Camelot Village and University Mall that we would, you know, want to make a favorable recommendation for that, that they'd get back more dollars than what they were putting into it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You did a good job.
More be exempted.
All in favor say aye. Both opposed say no. Ayes have it. The rest of the agenda here has been scratched, and ordinance authorizing appointment of reserve police officers, volunteer qualifier, O2, manager's recommendation.
Which one is that?
This is, we're down on item 12, O2.
Am I going to explain this?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah. The, what this is, Mr. Mayor, is a request on our part to provide for a reserve police officer corps. All of these officers have to be trained, the same as our regular police officers, and they would be available to us in times of emergency, as well as in times of when we just needed additional manpower for such things as ballgames and concerts and things of that type. All the people who qualified would have to be qualified under state law, just the same as our regular police officers, so, and they would be covered by workman's compensation and liability when they were on the job, and we think it's an excellent way of increasing the potential staffing for major events in our police department.
The proposal sounds logical, but I can remember some commentary about, some years ago about Carboro, which has, I gather, some sort of reserve police proposal, and in the context in which it was discussed, it was strongly criticized, that there were a bunch of loose cannons on the streets, and literally in Carboro. Now, as I read this, I see every reason to feel that that wouldn't be the case here. People have to be, to pass the same tests that would be required of any police officer. Firearms would be used on a limited basis and would not be issued to them except when they're on duty, kept in the locker at other times. These seem to provide adequate safeguards, but I have to say, I'm, I'm just, I just recall the conversation about this situation in our neighboring jurisdiction, and when I saw this, I thought, my goodness, are we going to do something crazy like that?
Years ago, police departments could have reserve squads or offices that did not have to have all of the same level of training that regular police officers do, but to be a sworn officer now, regardless, you must complete all of the required training that the state requires. And so I think that makes a difference, and secondly, we did include a provision that the manager would appoint these folks and also he could discharge them if they did not act like professional police officers.
Mr. Smith? Question number one. Would the reserve officers be in a position to direct traffic during rush hour? The first thing. Number two, what is the difference between this and the overhaue policy that we have?
The first question, yes, these people would be available to do-
And trained.
And trained to do any duty that our police officers normally would do, and they would of course, and they would not be paid for that.
You say that our police officers normally do. Now, our police officers don't direct traffic. Now, that's one thing. Now, I-
That was the second question.
Well-
The second question is, yes, they could direct traffic if that be what we were supposed to be doing and doing at that particular time.
I ask that question because, you know, one of the things that I heard as a result of the Olympic Festival is to say that we want our policemen to help direct traffic, the traffic during that festival. Now, ladies and gentlemen, if our police officer can direct traffic during the festival, they can direct traffic during rush hour sometime, you know? That's all I'm saying. I mean, you know, aren't we, and aren't we entitled to some of the same benefits that we give other people? You know? That's all I'm asking, that we have some way of relieving the congestion that's in this town in rush hour, and it's not going to get any better. It's going to get worse. And we sat here tonight, and we approved two subdivisions, and nobody seemed to be concerned with the traffic bottleneck that we're going to have out there where the traffic is already bad on Mama Road, and we were there, Road. Now, it's going to be outrageous there, ladies and gentlemen. It's already outrageous all over town. Unless we can require our policemen to be trained and assist us in traffic control measures, we're going to have one terrible time in this town as we grow. We've got to make a nonsense for it. The state is not going to help us build in the necessary roads to relieve traffic.
Further than that, allow us to do it?
They're not going to allow us to do it, so we're going to have to do something. So we might as well start looking in that direction. They're always saying, John, you can't put your money in.
Well, I'm wondering if we can be able to do anything in the bypass based on this new West End? All existing agreements were grandfathered.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, if they go to work at Ding Dong, they won't get paid, the volunteers that we're talking about here?
Volunteers never.
Well, I know that, that's what I'm trying to say, and we couldn't get the, well, you all tried to get the tax on that, and we've now going to put volunteers over there, everybody else is going to be paid separate too, and that's separate from our normal budget process. Is that not true?
No, we bill the Smith Center for those services, and it goes through our budget, and we pay those officers that work, and then we are reimbursed by the Smith Center. Here, we are not anticipating paying these, but these are volunteers, and we're not anticipating paying them.
That's real funny. I'm a vote for it because I don't want to cut somebody else from volunteering, but it'd just be very strange, and the other part of it that you've mentioned in here about two people that are already trained, using our facilities and being already trained, and now we're just in the process, and I talked to you earlier about this, and we're just in the process tonight of approving this official, and I had some problem with that, but I can never want to cut anybody else from volunteering. So if anybody else has anything, pass away.
Are we going to spend the same amount to train these guys, or men or women, as we do now our own police officers?
Except for pay, yes. These people, if they're not already trained, would go through our police academy, and to the extent that was a cost to us, yes, we'll absorb all of that cost, but we will be paying them in salary while they could.
What are they for, just to fill in gaps when, or is it an honorary?
None. Believe it or not, they're people who want to do this. They're people who want to be reserve police officers, just like they're people who want to be volunteer firemen, or people who want to be volunteer rescue squad members.
Are these retired police officers?
No. And are these two people that are already, that have already gone through the training? One is a former police officer who has now taken a different job with the town as a civilian. He doesn't want to lose his certification as a police officer. It's a way he can continue to serve his community and still maintain his certification. One is a doctor who has gone through the police training academy, who wants to serve the community this way, as a volunteer.
I agree with what Jonathan was alluding to. I don't want people walking around that, with all the powers of being a police person, without being an actual sworn.
They will be sworn.
I know, but they're not, I feel like it's an honorarium, or it's something, it's a hobby for them, and it just bothers me that they're going to be carrying a gun and doing all the things policemen do.
The question I had, will the town be liable if, while they're serving for us, some incident occurs?
Yes. To the same extent, to the same extent as if they were a regular police officer, yes.
I don't know how we tickle the file, but I sure would like to have a report on this in six months, another one in a year, because I think there are some really quite serious concerns about all this. It's good to know that the spirit of volunteerism still exists, and I suppose the Olympic Festival demonstrates that, but when it also entails the power of arrest, the right to wear a badge and carry a weapon, frankly, I'm concerned about it.
Okay. Do I have a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Noes likewise?
A no.
Okay. Ayes have it, one no, both no. The resolution includes inverse resolutions. All six, do I hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Without B and C? B and C, didn't you?
I pull B. Thirteen B is what I-
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed say no. Ayes have it. We have Mr. Edwards, who had contacted the manager's office and also contacted me, that he wanted to make a statement. Mr. Edwards, getting late, so come on very quickly and make your statement to the council.
I'd like to say good evening to the council. I'm Charlie. Some may know me, some may not know me. I'm Elsie Edwards. I'm a year and a half, Elsie's Taxi and the Chapel Hill Transit. Now, I won't hold you up long because this is just the beginning. I know it's getting late. Elsie's Taxi incorporated 1985 here in Chapel Hill, and it's been operating until June 17th at low noon of 1987. We shut it down, and we had many reasons for it to be shut down. It's a lot of illegal hauling going on in Chapel Hill. Well, Dr. J.R. Manley of the day says God is unpleased with, that let the wrong come in and the good do nothing, and there's so many of us down here that's not doing nothing. So I'm here because I need to go back to work with the town of Chapel Hill. I set up the Chapel Hill Transit. The town asked me to go to Raleigh to learn about Mass Transit in 1970, and I was gone for three years, and I came back here and set up the Chapel Hill Transit, and I worked with them until 84, excuse me. And it took my job away from me, but they have anything on record showing why they let me go. Only thing my attorney says, and he has, that they wanted me to be crazy. Dr. Rooks, David Rooks III is my attorney. He knows about it. He wanted me to shut down two months ago, but it wasn't time. And I went to Bob Gardens today to ask for my job because I have a lot of people that pay back I owe, because I run a straight corporation, but it's in debt, and it's in debt because I'm competing against the illegal hauling. That you, a lot of you, don't know what's going on. Some of you may know, the righteous, you may know. Righteous don't know, but the unrighteous knows, knows them, and that's my behalf to come here and ask the councilmen to point someone, either the councilman, to check in, to check their record, because I got it all right here on the day that I started, because we cut the ribbon August the first of 74. Dr. Lee himself, he has one half, the ribbon I have the other half. He knows it, all about it, and so I've been gone for three years, so I've got to get back in the cell seat of that bus to pay some of these people that were in Chapel Hill, and I'd like very much that the councilmen point someone to look into this. I talked with Bob Gardens today, and he refused to give me my job back after three years, and I'm going to leave it at that. That's my reason of here, to speak. Then if you don't know, that it's a lot the councilmen don't know, but they will find out in the future.
We refer up to the staff and ask for a report very responsibly.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed say no. Ayes have it. We recess this meeting to tomorrow night. We don't have an executive session night. We've been informed by, no, I've been informed by the town attorney.
Turned it off at the beginning. I was at 15. Move this meeting to recess tomorrow night.
I will try my best to.
Recession tomorrow night, 7:30.
Good. Good.
The Chapel Hill Town Council meetings are brought to you by a grant from Carolina Cable, the Village Companies, and the Town of Chapel Hill.